The item from February 7. We already have staff report and council ask questions, public comment. So we're going to go straight to council discussions. Okay. Does the council want to make a motion? And seconded before discussion or the council's pleasure to talk, discuss first? According to our new procedures, we each have five minutes for discussion. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Okay. Vice Mayor Mohan?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the response to the 2022 civil grand jury report from Santa Clara County.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
And so accept the staff response, right?
Okay. As we come in it. Okay. Is that the motion?
I didn't hear that. Oh, so.
So the motion is to accept the staff response as stated in the item, right?
That's correct.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'll second that. So we have a motion by Vice Mayor Mohan and seconded by Councilmember Chow.
I'd like to offer a substitute motion.
Okay, Councilmember Froom, please do.
I'll need to share my screen, but for some reason my Zoom has gone down, so you'll have to bear with me here. I have to bring Zoom back up. It went down.
Okay.
So just to clarify, this is a substitute motion?
Yes. Tell you what, so that I don't have to wait for it, I will paste the text into an email and that way the city clerk can put it on the screen.
Sorry, a little technical difficulty right there.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, I've sent you the email.
Okay.
All right, so I would like to make some changes that will strengthen the response. The first is to alter the sentence at the end of the first paragraph to read, "In addition, the city continues to make policy progress in many areas. For example, the city council recently approved two significant large development projects and a number of smaller developments in a timely fashion. And the city continues to innovate in policy areas such as its response to climate change and the reduction of single-use plastics." Second is to, with respect to finding four and elsewhere as the city attorney deems appropriate or helpful to the strength of the response, to add language to note the adoption, first, of the council procedures manual; second, that the city will revisit its ethics policy using the 2018 policy as a starting point for revision; third, that the city will revisit the commissioner's handbook to bring it into alignment with the council procedures manual; and to address other concerns raised by the civil grand jury report; and then four, that the city attorney will investigate and report back on other violations of the municipal code with respect to the council staff and commissioner staff relations, so that the city council may establish policy to correct or prevent such violations in future. And I hope that that will resolve some of the questions that people have had about what actually has happened in the city.
Can you continue to show that, please?
Video, could you please switch the camera to show my share screen?
So the substitute. Be bigger, it's hard to read.
So the substitute motion is to change the language?
To adopt, yeah, to adopt the response as proposed with the following changes.
Okay, start from "in addition."
In addition, to change the last sentence in the first paragraph to, "In addition, the city continues to make policy progress in many areas. For example, the city council recently approved two significant large development projects and a number of smaller developments in a timely fashion. And the city continues to innovate in policy areas such as its response to climate change and the reduction of single-use plastics." And re-finding four and elsewhere as the city attorney deems appropriate or helpful to the strength of the response, adding language to note, first, the adoption of the council procedures manual; second, that the city will revisit its ethics policy using the 2018 policy as a starting point for revision; third, that the city will revisit the commissioner's handbook to bring it into alignment with the council procedures manual; and to address other concerns raised by the civil grand jury report; and fourth, that the city attorney will investigate and report back on other violations of the municipal code with respect to council staff and commissioner staff relations, so that the city council may establish policy to correct or prevent such violations in future.
So I may ask a question, Councilmember Froom. So this, else the city attorney deems appropriate, do you want the city attorney to bring it back for us to review it again or just the city attorney's discretion?
No, I would trust the city attorney's discretion on the matter.
Okay. All right, so we have a substitute motion on the table. Do we have a second? I'll second that one. So now we're open for discussions. According to the manual, we each have five minutes. So Councilmember Chow, you'd like to start?
Oh, okay.
I see your light on. Five minutes, please. Thank you.
Sorry, can I go a little later?
Anybody want to start? Discussions? We have a motion and a substitute. The discussions were both. So, go ahead.
I can start. Yeah, okay. So let me share my screen. Okay. So first, I'd like to thank the civil grand jurors for committing to spend 20 hours per week to serve as watchdogs for our public agency. It's a well-intentioned process, but the process unfortunately is flawed. And here is the actual process. The interviewees have to sign a statement to not disclose the content of the interview until the report comes out. However, they are not required to sign, to swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. The interviewees were all anonymous. They are not accountable for what they said in their interview. The civil grand jury also did not ask for any supporting evidence to make any attempt to verify the claim. I voluntarily supplied evidence after the interview, but they seem to have not read the evidence I provided. They selectively include some narratives in which, in their final report, but some they choose to ignore. Due to the lack of cross-examination and evidence-seeking process, the civil grand jury unfortunately is a collection of selective narratives, not verified witness, testimony, or affidavit. A functional city government require a two-way public engagement process throughout the decision-making process, but a lot of the claims made by the civil grand in the report were concerns or statements that were never brought to the attention of the city administration or the city council. As a result, the city could not respond to them. For example, the very simple fact of the Code of Ethics was not posted on the website. If any member of the public just emailed the city attorney, city manager, or the council, that could have been resolved. This is not even a council decision to provide that. What we are seeing is a very dysfunctional, but not within between the council and the city staff, but we are seeing some people choose to broadcast, never express concerns direct, not to the city admin or council, they broadcast to civil grand jury or even through lawsuit right before an election. And that's very dysfunctional. They are creating a perception of dysfunction that may or may not be there. And because they did not bring the concerns, some of them misunderstand the actual fact. And unfortunately, we cannot correct them because they did not bring it to the attention of the city. Regarding City Hall, this statement by the civil grand jury that funding were allocated in 2015 and then redirected is false. 2015, the city council never funded the project. They approved a plan which include a new city hall, but turns out it's too costly, so they dropped the project entirely. They did not even consider the option of simply renovating to reduce the cost. This statement by civil grand jury claimed the staff, some staff are concerned the city council is not willing to fund the project, they are concerned about their safety. And this concern was never brought up to the city manager, since the city manager never brought up that concern to the council, when the council in fact have been working on trying to find ways to renovate the city hall with the economic means we have. If this concern had been brought up to their supervisors, I'm sure the city manager will address the issue with the staff so that they have the correct information. And fiscal management, this statement is, this part of the report is accurate, that the city has not been providing monthly treasurer's report. And now the city finally is providing that, but the report for neglect to mention, it was Councilmember Katie Moore who actually, who brought up the concern repeatedly, and finally the city staff complied. And I don't have time to go over so many of them, but here are the facts on the Code of Ethics. The civil grand jury choose not to include, which is, this city never had the Code of Ethics before November 2018. And it was adopted, but there are many concerns, which I emailed them, but then they choose to not include in the report. The 2018 Code of Ethics has a lot of issues, which is why it was rescinded. And the civil grand jury choose not to include any of them. If I have more time, I can go through the specific concerns. And for any suggestion to base Code of Ethics on this problematic report that did not receive any public input and did not get the approval of any commissioner, it's a problem.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Chow, for agreeing to the five minutes. Councilmember Moore?
Great, thank you. So you should have my response in the written communications. So this is a response representing myself only, that the response from the city did not correct the findings error on page eight of the report. The grand jury did not inform me of the allegation in the report for response, which one would expect in a proper investigation. While I do appreciate the immense time that the citizen volunteers willingly donate to the grand jury, it's very important that they and the city staff providing information get it right. Paragraph one on page eight states that I questioned a subordinate of the city manager about charges. The staff member incurred on a city credit card, the staff member presented an explanation of the charges. Councilmember Moore did not accept the explanation and requested copies of the documentation to pursue her own investigation. This is not true. What actually happened is that I had observed, and I should mention that I've been on the audit committee, had been on the audit committee for two years, and I was chairing it last year, that I had observed very high credit card charges in the accounts payable, which the city council accepts by resolution. Because credit card charges have had nothing associating the charges for what they were for, what budget items they relate to, just dollar amounts which reached $95,000 in one month alone, I asked about them. These charges would total over $400,000 per year with no reporting to the public for what the city's money was being spent on or a formal audit of these charges. It should be noted, as I said, I'd been concurrently serving on the audit committee and eventually chairing it. I had seen the city's credit card policy, which actually was put together by acting city manager Amy Chan. And I'd spoken to friends who have company and government issued cards and was told what they were required to document for their card use, and read the San Jose P-card report called procurement cards. Clarification of policies and additional oversight can improve the P-card program. And I have a link in my document. I brought the credit card concern up a number of times, and finally with interim city manager Greg Larson in 2021, we had a discussion about the potential issues with lacking transparency, and he asked me to request a single month to do a spot check on the receipts of, and limit the request to two card users, which I did. Later, I met again with interim city manager Larson, who gave me a folder which had an internal memo written to him regarding the card uses and the supporting documentation for the charges. I never spoke to either employee those supporting documentation came from. Separately, an employee was found to have used their card for personal items, and I was informed that they had been let go. City Attorney Jensen has the folder I described and can share what he deems as disclosable. The interim city manager had also asked me to do another spot check in the future. Given that I was handed the information in hard copy, it was not in email, it is very possible that no other staff members knew that I had it. I hope this corrects the record adequately. And then I do want to mention, and I think I might have said this before, the response to finding three, the grand jury report makes it sound like the embezzlement, which ended around September of 2014, was found in 2014. The city does not correct this so that the public will understand that the embezzlement was found in 2018. The city does not reference the 2018 and 2019 internal controls reports, which are actually pretty difficult to find, which have numerous deficiencies in city responses. The city also does not address that the policies staff and Moss Adams mentioned that they were working on were not brought to the audit committee or council for us to actually see what those policies are. I want to mention the March 14, 2019, City of Cupertino internal controls review by Frank Rimmerman and Company LLP. It's a quote, "It appears that the City of Cupertino purchasing policy was last updated on September 1, 2013. The City of Cupertino should consider periodically reviewing and updating their accounting policies to ensure continued appropriateness." Management's response, "City staff have been working diligently over the past few months to ensure a comprehensive purchasing policy manual is approved and implemented. Anticipated date of completion and council approval is by June 30, 2019." We still haven't gotten that updated procurement policy. Still hasn't happened. "The city does not mention that at the January Audit Committee, the treasurer recommended that the Audit Committee no longer review the monthly treasurer reports, just the quarterly investment reports, which are two reporters, two reports generated by our hired investors, that the Audit Committee alone sees the accounts payable statements, and no longer would they come to council, that instead of meeting monthly, that audit would recommend that they only meet six times per year. This reduces the number of views these items get and increases risk. Please let the grand jury know that all the good work that's being done is being rapidly undone. We need transparency and accountability." So when, we will be having the items come to council, but they will not, they'll be in memo form. We might still get the accounts payable by resolution that will show up on the agenda, but understand that some of those items, you're not going to see them, they're just going to go to council. Thank you.
So I'm going to make a couple minutes' comment. As I said, the grand jury report is not something to take lightly, and I do believe our city manager, city attorney did a good job of responding to it, but I do agree with Councilmember Froom that there are relevant laws that's specific that we need to follow. We are council members, yes. We make directions, we approve ordinances, but we need to follow our own municipal laws. And I do believe the grand jury report pointed out to that, and further, you know, work from the council as a whole, we need to work on that. So I do believe that there's a lot of work to do, and I believe we can work on it if we all, and take a step back and say, this is happening, so let's work on it. And as for the, a lot of things that's being said, I just want to say I trust our city attorney can do a good response to the grand jury, and it's due March 20. And I do like that we are going to authorize our city attorney to make the necessary adjustment, and it doesn't have to come back to council because I trust our staff and their expertise. So I am in fully support of Councilmember Froom's substitute motion. Any more comments from council members?
I can, Vice Mayor Mohan?
And you haven't said anything, or Councilmember Froom?
After reviewing the grand jury report and the response, I think it's fair. We, I think the city attorney has made it clear that we disagree with a lot of items. We partially disagree, we partially agree. So I think that's fair enough. And my hope is that we take all the findings seriously and move beyond this. I mean, it's, you know, it doesn't make too much sense to keep going back to the years when some of these issues were raised. They're raised, there's no point in complaining about whether the grand jury is correct in its procedures or it has credibility. It is what it is, and we need to move on. And I am, I am satisfied with the city attorney's response to the grand jury report, and I'd like to move ahead.
Any more comments? As we can go for a vote. Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, so I want to largely echo what the vice mayor has mentioned. To the extent that, you know, there's still a lot of concern about what the civil grand jury relied on, whether it was reliable, et cetera, my hope is that the fourth point in my suggested response to finding four, that the city attorney will investigate and report back on other violations of the municipal code with respect to the council staff relationship, will help us to resolve what the truth is in some of these instances, surface problems so that we can address it. I think that we are cheating ourselves of an opportunity to really improve the city by not taking this seriously, and I hope that everyone will spend some time thinking about that fact.
So I think everyone has their say in five minutes. You did, our manual says, everybody get five minutes, so.
I have a friendly amendment to.
I have a friendly amendment to Councilmember Froom's proposal.
Okay.
So the 2018, I would like to remove the part that, the phrase, "using the 2018 policy" as the starting point for review.
You have it on the, on the, Kirsten, do you think we can have it, Councilmember Froom's substitute motion on the screen again?
Oh, yes.
So I know exactly which one you are removing. So your friendly amendment is to remove number second, the second one?
Yes.
That the city council revises the assist policy, period?
None.
Remove using the 2018.
Yeah.
Councilmember Froom, your one?
I do not accept the friendly amendment.
Then I would like to make a substitute motion to that effect.
I think we do the substitute motion once only, and then we can vote on the substitute.
You can have three motions on table at the same time.
That's correct, yes. So if the vice mayor would like to make a second substitute motion.
And, yeah. Please do. Go ahead.
Second, Moore?
So I would like some more time to finish my presentation regarding the problem with 2018 Code of Ethics. That's why this substitute motion, so I can provide reasons for my substitute motion.
So their substitute motion is the same as the Councilmember Froom's substitute motion, but without the sentence using the 2018. Is that correct?
Yeah, because that document is very problematic.
And that's seconded by Councilmember Moore, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to see the council members' pleasure, do we, City Attorney Jensen, can I ask you a question? Do we have to allow another five minutes deliberation, or we can just vote?
It's at your discretion, Mayor.
Okay, so I think we're very familiar with the 2018.
No, I'm sorry, I have never expressed this in any council meeting. We didn't talk about that last time.
Right, but we did read the 2018.
So I think I should have a few minutes to provide reasons for my motion.
Do you need a couple minutes?
Yeah, maybe three minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask a procedural question? I just want to clarify from the attorney. So what we just observed here, if I understand correctly, it's the new procedures, as I understood them, that the mayor has the sole discretion to stop deliberations and go to a vote. That, I believe that's what I just saw.
Our council members must be given at least five minutes to deliberate on an item beyond that. If the mayor feels there's a need for additional discussion, it's at the mayor's discretion to allow that.
So, okay, just further clarification, we're allowed five minutes to speak on an item, and then the item can be forced to a vote if the mayor so decides. Is that correct?
Right, yes, that five minutes is a fairly standard recognized time for deliberations.
So even when we get to the housing element, five minutes.
The mayor has discretion to allow additional time where she believes additional time is necessary. Any procedural decision of the mayor can also be overruled by a majority of vote of the council.
Okay, and prior to this procedural manual change, it required a supermajority in order to stop the deliberations. Thank you.
Okay, so go ahead. Councilmember Moore?
So, so these are the facts that I shared earlier. The item was not in any of the, it was adopted, it was never there before, and it's put on under the agenda item that's for improving communication with commission. And this item was, there was no study session earlier. It was one of the six documents approved. And the commissioner, his staff's report says commissions were very supportive, but there is no record of any commission ever provided their support for this Code of Ethics. And here are the other problems. In item six of that version, it says decision-makers will base their decision on facts presented at the hearing of the law and the law, which this requirement usually applies only for quasi-judicial decisions, not all policy decisions at the council. And item seven, city officials will rely on agenda materials and information received at the public hearing. These are, and then item eight, conflict of interest, it says an organization, organization or anyone who is with an organization that has a strong personal bias to any item, it is considered a conflict of interest. This is much beyond the normal financial conflict of interest.
Mayor, wait, I made, the timer hasn't started.
Yeah, well, I think I'm going to give you a couple, you said a couple minutes, three minutes, so I think almost.
So this is the last slide, yeah. So according to this, item six or seven would have prevented any council member to use any communication of meeting with community members and other resources to make their decision. Item eight would have prevented the bike and pet commissioners to even make a decision because many of them have strong opinion to pro a certain bike project. And sustainability commissioners would have strong bias towards sustainability initiatives, and they cannot vote. So this is very, I think that's the whole process of that process, that the adoption of, that we should not start with something that's so problematic, let's start fresh. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a substitute motion by Councilmember Chow, seconded by Councilmember Moore, and may we both vote on that now? and may we both vote on that now?
I don't think I used my full five minutes.
You did, but that's okay because since council member Chow used another three minutes, go ahead, use your three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Three minutes, please.
Thank you. So I agree with the, the comments and the rationale from council member Chow. One thing in particular that's bothersome there is the use only of the materials that you're essentially handed by staff. So if you could put that back up on the screen, I would like to, I'd like to see that wording again because for multiple projects, there, you know, staff, staff is, staff's great, but sometimes things don't get into the packet that we want to know about. And here we've got, "decision makers will base their decisions on the facts presented at the hearing and the law," which is supposed to apply only for quasi judicial decisions. So, wow, so what happens if we go out and visit a site? We take photographs, we take photographs from different angles that maybe staff didn't consider would be important. Maybe we talk to the neighbors and, and we have all this other information or we research somewhere else about something. So this, for, for me, this is a real sticking point for the kinds of information that we have in order to make our decisions and I don't think we should be starting from this, this point and we're going to have a future, you know, perhaps argument over, over this and are we really going to tie our hands this way? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council member Frum?
Yes, so I'm, I'm only asking in the motion that we start with the 2018 ethics policy as a starting point. It doesn't mean that it is the, what I'm asking for is a resurrection of the 2018 policy. So I trust the city attorney to bring back a policy that is consonant with our procedures manual, that is consonant with our other policies in order to be able to let us move forward on this topic. The rest of the 2018 ethics policy is considerably stronger than what it was replaced by and when it was originally passed, it passed unanimously. So I don't see a reason why we can't use it as the basis for a starting point.
Thank you, council member Frum. Vice mayor Mahin?
To the city attorney, is there an opportunity to bring back the 2018 ethics policy and, and fine tune it or refine it?
I, I believe that, that is the request of, of the first substitute, of both the first and second substitute motions on the table. I guess the first specifically is directed at the, the 2018 ethics policy.
Which will come back.
So that, that would come back for, for consideration by council, you know, perhaps as part of the, the work program for next year.
Okay, thank you. Clarifications as a starting point, right? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I, I think we're.
So my main issue is with the term as a starting point. You could bring, that could be one of the, one of the document we review together with other potential options, but as a starting point is very problematic. That document was a violation of Bron Act when it was adopted because it wasn't agendized as Code of Ethics. The public didn't even know it's on the agenda, they couldn't comment on it.
Okay, so, council member Frum, you have something else to say?
No, I was just about to call a point of order, we've already deliberated.
Yes. Okay, so let's vote on the first, note on the substitute motion that's made by council member Chow and second by council member Moore. Let's vote by light, please.
The substitute motion. Sorry, wait, this is the substitute motion?
This is the second substitute motion.
This is the second substitute motion, okay, let's, this is the second substitute motion made by council member Chow, second by council member Moore.
We will bring back the ethics policy, just not starting with the 2018 one, which is, let's start fresh.
Okay, so let's put it on the screen. Okay, let's put it on the screen, please. The one that council member Frum made, the substitute motion, but cross out the one that council member Chow doesn't want.
Wait, I'm sorry, so you want me to share my screen or you want?
Yeah, share your screen, please, thank you. We're a little confused. So the substitute motion made by council member Frum, let's show it on the screen. And the second substitute motion is made by council member Chow, with the second one crossed out, using the 2018 policy as a starting point. The rest is the same. So we're voting on this one, okay? Is that clear?
No, it's clear, except to me, I, I don't understand what the, using the 2018 policy as a starting point, why that is so confusing.
No, she wants to take it off.
I know, I know.
Well, I think we should not be bound, we should not bound our hand with a starting point. That, that could be considered as one of the documents we review in the study session. Now, I think we should, we can consider other Code of Ethics from other cities, but that's not start with a failed one. So we, we have more positive start.
Okay, so this is the substitute motion we're voting on. Can we vote by light, please?
If I may, Madam Mayor. So one of my reasons for focusing on the 2018 report, policy is because the civil grand jury report specifically cites it. What we wind up with could be a very significant departure. I think this is a stronger response because it is more directly responsive to the civil grand jury report.
On Mac, respond. The civil grand jury did not mention, and the content of the policy. The civil grand jury mentioned some enforcement policy that I couldn't even find and they did not respond to my question. I don't think they even understand the content.
Okay, so let's, I think we have explained ourselves, so let's vote by light, please. This is the substitute motion without the 2018.
This is Chow's substitute motion?
Yes, Chow's substitute motion, yes.
Chow's substitute motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
So now we're going to the substitute motion that made by council member Frum, that's, that was shown on the, the.
So that's exactly the same except for that phrase.
Yes, as a starting point, use 2018 Code of Ethics as a starting point. Let's vote by light, please.
Council member Chow?
You haven't voted.
Question to the city attorney. So in my, I was, I pushed abstain actually earlier and it didn't line up, but can I abstain on this item because of my objection to one of the item? I really don't feel comfortable with, starting with a failed, very, very problematic Code of Ethics.
It's, it's, of course, it's completely within your discretion to abstain.
So I can abstain? Okay, then can I change my vote to abstain?
Shall we, is that good? Shall we, we, we vote again? Okay.
Frum's substitute motion carries with Chow abstaining and Moore voting no.
All right, thank you. Now we're moving to action number 11, consider adopting resolution of, it's a long recommended action, so I'm going to read the whole thing. So let's go with a staff report, please. City manager Wu?
Thank you, Mayor Way. I do need a little technical assistance and Madden's city clerk will help me. So I will start with my presentation while Kirsten brings it up, take your time. So this is a follow-up ordinance amendment to council, following up on the January 25th special meeting to do several changes to the ordinance, municipal code relating to legislative review committee, economic development committee, environmental review committee, design review committee, in addition to the audit committee. So the objective tonight is threefold. We are asking council to adopt a resolution so you can repel and replace the resolution that enact the legislative review committee. We're also asking you to establish economic development working group by this, and that will be authorized by the city manager and this is an alternative that was proposed by council member Chow in the motion coming from January 25th. And we're also asking council to amend Cupertino Municipal Code, section 2.84, 2.90, 2.96, 1702, 2.32, 2.88, 9.20, 19.08, 19.12, 19.28, 19.104, and 19.124. And this has to do with reconsolidating the responsibilities related to the various committee that I just mentioned earlier. Next slide. Again, the agenda for tonight, I have went over the objective for council's consideration. I will be going over the reasons for, for recommendation of each of the committee as laid out in the staff report. Conclude my presentation with staff's recommendation and open questions from council and members of the public. Next slide. Start with the background, as I mentioned, this item was introduced to council on January 17 and then subsequently continued to January 25th. At the 25th, January 25th meeting, council held a study session and voted to direct staff to consolidate certain commissions and committee and also to discontinue all of the previously formed city council subcommittee committees and to proceed with ordinance amendment to come back to council for consideration. Within the motion, council also directed staff to provide an alternative to economic development committee as part of the ordinance amendment analysis and that's been presented in your staff report. Next slide. So we'll start with the legislative review committee. A bit of a background is laid out in staff report. This committee was enacted through a council adopted policy in 2018, which delegated the authority to the legislative review committee. What staff is recommending council to consider is to reset the resolution by adopting a new resolution and to update the legislative advocacy policy by requiring all of the positions that city will take to be considered by city council with the very limited circumstances that council can delegate that authority to me in, for instance, in emergency or a very limited capacity. Next slide. Second, we're asking council to consider the disbandment of economic development committee as it laid out, municipal code section 2.96 that was enacted in 2022, described the functions and responsibility of this committee. What staff is recommending is to repel the ordinance completely and also to establish economic development working group. This is the alternative. Reasons for a working group is to allow more flexibility to pivot more quickly to immediate interests. This will serve as an advisory capacity to staff on a as needed basis, allowing for tailored discussion. And this will also include an array of business and also business serving agencies both locally and regionally. So without having a Bron Act body, this allows for a lot more flexibility to pivot to the interests of the topic at the time. Next slide. Continuing on the economic development committee, future arrangement, this working group will meet hopefully in the spring or summer timeframe and the group will focus on assessing current program and developing a holistic framework. And staff can provide updates to council on the discussions and the progress that are made regularly at council's desire. Please note that this is an alternative following council's motion. If council would like to provide any more guidance or direction, we're more than happy to, to implement. This working group will not require any action by council. Alternatively, as I mentioned, that council can provide something completely different or doesn't, or not support the working group alternative at all. Next slide. Environmental review committee, again, background, the municipal code section 2.84 enacted environmental review committee in 1990 and what staff is recommending is to, again, repel the ordinance entirely and to amend section, chapter 9.20. This is a review of offsite hazardous waste facility to address any environmental review committee functions in that chapter. And also we're asking council at the time to also establish a new chapter relates to California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, to make sure that there is compliance with the state SEQA guidance. Next slide. As part of the environmental review committee, we're also asking council to consider activating a local assessment committee that has not been active to review any sort of offsite hazardous waste facility that should include issues related to SEQA review. This is, again, like I said, a dormant committee, but it is a committee that has been fully described in our municipal code in section, I don't have it, I think it's chapter 19.
Chapter 9 dot 20.
9 dot 20. Thank you, Chris. Next slide. Continuing to design review committee, design review committee has been with the city for some time and, and its duties, it's a subcommittee of the planning commission and its duty has been described in section 2.90 of the city municipal code. Again, staff is recommending the entire ordinance to be repelled and also to delegate the authority of design review to either planning commission or staff. This will amend section 2.32, 070H to remove any reference to establishment of design review committee. Next slide. And this chart is including the staff report provides you an, a summary of what sort of a permit that will used to be heard by the design review committee and in the future will be heard either by the planning commission or administrative hearing. For instance, a sign exception will continue to go to planning commission, a fence exception will go to administrative hearing, ASA permits for decorative statutory project will also go to administrative hearing. Next slide. So the prior slides conclude staff's recommendation on what happened on January 25th based on council's direction. This is a recommendation coming from audit committee. So the audit committee convened during their January meeting and voted unanimously to recommend the council amend certain financial reporting requirements, including some requirements that's been codified in the municipal code. So specifically, the audit committee recommend that the monthly investment report to be provided to the city council via an off agenda memo and that the city council amend the committee's jurisdiction to review only quarterly investment reports for the audit committee. It's a very limited tax amendment to the audit committee's task, task and responsibility. Next slide. This wraps up all of the changes to the ordinance that staff is recommending, recommending. To complete my presentation, staff is asking council to adopt a resolution regarding legislative review committee to conduct the first reading of the ordinance amendment related to the various committee that I just mentioned in my staff report and this will come back as a second reading and the ordinance itself will take effect 30 days after the second reading. And we're also asking council to find your actions to be exempt from the SEQA guideline. Next slide, I believe that concludes my presentation and more than happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you, city manager Wu. Now we have five minutes of each council members to ask questions. Anybody wants to post a question first? Council member Chow?
Yeah, so first, I think I would like the staff to clarify regarding the legislative review committee. That resolution in 2018 was adopted before I got on the council. Actually, I didn't know there is that resolution. And, and then we were, we had assignment to legislative review committee and none of the city attorney in 2019 or thereafter has expressed any concern that this is not complying with municipal code. And I think city attorney Chris Jensen has not brought that to our attention until I see this agenda for February 21st. So I would like to clarify that the council only act based on the advice from the city attorney, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to respond to that. So yeah, that, that's a fair characteristic.
So I would like to clarify that the council only act based on the advice from the city attorney, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to respond to that. So yeah, that's a fair characterization, this is not something that I had focused on. I did, in preparing this agenda item for council, I reviewed the municipal code provisions and identified the provision cited in your staff report, and I do believe there's an inconsistency between delegating the authority to take legislative positions to a subcommittee in that provision of the municipal code, and that's reflected in the staff report. I think it's fair to say that this has been a longstanding policy of this city, but I do think this is an opportunity to correct it and bring it in line with the municipal code. If council wished to go in a different direction, of course, we could consider changes to the municipal code.
Yeah, I actually agree with your assessment that bill position should be taken by the full council, but just to clarify, the previous council didn't just delegate the entire authority, they did adopt a legislative platform, which was approved by the council, and then specify what they can support, oppose, or monitor, right?
Yes, that's, and that's, yes, that's reflected in the 2018 resolution, and that's been the practice since that time.
And so I contacted you and asking, the draft resolution we have today gives this misinterpretation, misperception that somehow the council was not complying with the municipal code. Could, have you considered any wording to clarify? The council did follow the recommendation by the previous city attorney?
So I haven't had a conversation with the previous city attorney, so I wouldn't be able to confirm that, but I would say that, you know, that the discussion of the municipal code is not necessary for adoption of the resolution, and if it's council's desire to strike that recital from the resolution, that would not affect the ability of the resolution or the substance of the action.
Yeah, it seems, okay, striking is an option because I know that there is different attorney interpret the code differently. I agree with your interpretation, but just putting that there without the context gives this misperception. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a councilmember more?
I was wondering through the mayor, if we could see what the reports are that the Audit Committee currently would be reviewing? What are the treasurer's reports?
Through the mayor, so the Audit Committee currently reviews the investment report, the treasurer's report, and also other financial report that comes to Audit Committee.
Okay, specifically through the mayor, which are the reports that are being altered?
So the Audit Committee's recommendation is to have only quarterly investment report coming to the Audit Committee.
Okay, and what happens to the monthly treasurer's report?
The monthly treasurer's report will continue to come to city council in an off-agenda memo.
What's an off-agenda memo?
For instance, a informational item on the city council agenda.
Why, okay, so an informational item that no member of the public can speak on when that item's being reviewed, it would only be during oral communications if members of the public understand the new process, that they could use their three minutes to either speak about a topic that they're interested in, want to share, or if there were, say, seven informational items, they would only have three minutes to be able to address any of those, which seems very unfair. So I just want to understand that this off-agenda memo means that the public really isn't going to have time to talk about it, and that's kind of a problem because this is about our money. Okay, so could someone from staff please put up the sentence in the municipal code that's being altered so that I can understand, because I'm not really sure what that change actually is?
You'd like to see the ordinance?
Yes, because I'm not really understanding what you, what that language is.
I can do that if you.
I believe it's in the staff report, so we'll pull out the attachment.
So does staff write the investment report? Because I thought the investment report was done by Chandler and US Bank, and then it's brought to the, currently, it's actually brought to the Audit Committee on a monthly basis, and the receipts dispersments and fund balances are brought to the Audit Committee on a monthly basis. And we had also started having the accounts payable come to the Audit Committee, and what this was providing was a second set of eyes. So do I understand that correctly?
I'm sorry, so the Audit Committee's recommendation is to have the financial institution continue to appear these report, but only to have the quarterly investment report to come to Audit Committee before it goes to council.
So the Audit Committee recommends that they no longer look at receipts dispersments and fund balances?
No longer reviews the AP.
That line in the municipal code changes the review of the monthly treasurer's report to now be reviewing the quarterly treasurer's investment report, which is a report that is under California Government Code 53607. The monthly treasurer's report is under California Government Code 41004. Regularly, at least once each month, the city treasurer shall submit to the city clerk a written report and accounting of all receipts dispersments and fund balances. So I also want to bring this up with regards to the, show me the money, the grand jury report didn't mention the fact that the quarterly treasurer's reports were supposed to be monthly, I mean, quarterly investment reports were supposed to be monthly investment reports pursuant to California Government Code 53607, which says that the authority of the legislative body to invest or reinvest funds of a local agency or to sell or exchange securities so purchased may be delegated for a one-year period by the legislative body to the treasurer of the local agency, who shall thereafter assume full responsibility for those transactions under the delegation of authority until the delegation of authority is revoked or expires and shall make monthly report of those transactions to the legislative body. Subject to review, the legislative body may renew the delegation of authority pursuant to this selection each year. I think council was wise in the past to have put this item in the hands of the Audit Committee so they would have a first set of eyes looking at these documents, and now this recommendation takes that away, if I'm understanding this correctly.
You're understanding this correctly. As stated in the staff report, the city will continue to remain compliant with Government Code, Section 41004, 53607, and 53646 regarding the treasurer's financial reporting, and we stated in the staff report.
And who made this recommendation? Was this a recommendation from the treasurer whose reports that they are reducing the workload on?
This is a recommendation coming from the Audit Committee.
The final one, but it came to the Audit Committee from the treasurer, is that correct?
This, I am reporting a recommendation from the Audit Committee.
Which originated with the treasurer, correct?
I'm going to pass it back to Mayor Wei. I don't know if that's a question directed at me.
So let me maybe continue the question. The monthly treasurer's report and investment report will still come to council?
Correct.
Okay, so we are buying by the municipal code?
We will be in compliance fully with the government code.
Okay, and the finance, the Audit Committee will review the investment report quarterly before the monthly one, before, it will still come to the council monthly, but it's only because the Audit Committee is meeting quarterly, so they'll review that every quarter together?
So the monthly treasurer's report will come to council directly in an off-agenda memo informational item. The quarterly, let's see, quarterly treasurer's investment report will come to Audit Committee first, and then it will be transmitted to council.
Okay, and that will be a quarterly report?
That will be a quarterly investment treasurer's report.
But that is not, the state of California is only asking the treasurer's report to be monthly.
The government code asks for three sections, three different financial reporting to be in compliance, and we're in full compliance with all three sections.
Okay, thank you. One question I want to follow up is, actually, I lost my train, I'm going to have somebody else do it first. Okay, Vice Mayor Mohan?
If I could make a quick comment, the public will be seeing all the reports that are currently on the agenda. It's just going to look a little different, but there is nothing, and I repeat, nothing that will restrict their ability to look at the accounts payable register or the treasurer's report. So the only difference is that they will not be coming through the Audit Committee before they come to the council. They will come directly to the council, except for the quarterly treasurer's investment report.
So I'm going to have Councilmember Frum, if you want something to say. I remember what I want to say after you.
Yeah, no, I'll just echo the Vice Mayor's comments, I think that they are a correct reflection of what is happening, and no one knows finance like the Vice Mayor, so.
One I would, the question I have is, the public still has time, they can come, they can see all the reports as information item, if they have questions, they can still email all the questions or make oral comments during oral communications.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other, if more questions, else we can open public comment.
Question.
Okay, please.
So off-agenda memo means it will be, still be posted on the council agenda, but only as information item?
That is correct.
So it's not going to be a memo just sent to council privately through email?
At this point.
Because off-agenda item is not defined.
So the Audit Committee recommended off-agenda memo, I'm recommending this to be included as an informational item on your council agenda.
So the, the council has requested for the monthly treasurer's report to be posted on the website. Will that be posted on the website so it's easy for the public to access, which, for reports from each month?
So we currently don't have that practice to only post certain reports, the public can still find these reports as part of that council packet?
But they don't know which month might contain the month they are looking for. Okay, that's fine. So City Attorney, I have a question. So is this within the authority of the Audit Committee to decide how the report is provided to the council, or it should be a council decision?
No, I think it would ordinarily be a city manager decision, but the city manager could take the advice of the Audit Committee into account.
Okay, so, but the council, if we choose to, can also direct the city manager to say, we would like the city, the treasurer's report to come to the council as an agenda item, as we have done in the past.
The council can set its own agenda, I think the city manager's recommendation reflects an attempt to move our meetings more away from managing operational aspects of the city and towards a greater degree of focus on policy issues, so in that sense, this recommendation is sort of a continuation of the discussion that we just finished regarding the grand jury report.
But we have found multiple issues because of these items that are on the council agenda, we were able to talk about them, and now we are not able to, thank you.
Is there a question, or we can go to public comment?
I have a question. So I want to verify that Government Code 41004 and 53607, these requirements in the government code have been around for many years. I know for a fact that 41004 goes back to at least 1949, I believe. Any idea how far back 53607 goes? I'm just wondering if these were in place when perhaps the Vice Mayor was our interim finance manager, because this was not being followed. Neither of these government codes were being followed until last year after the Audit Committee, which was myself asked about it.
Are you asking when government code 53, no, 53607 was enacted?
Yes, like how long have we been supposed to, have we supposed to have been providing these monthly investment reports and the monthly treasurer reports? How long have we been supposed to be?
I don't have that answer, I don't know, Chris, if you know that answer, but we could definitely look into and provide you an answer.
Okay, so.
So it's probably decades, okay.
Yes, okay, so, okay, so the question is done, we're going to go to public comment. Do we have cards?
Yes, Mayor, we have two cards in house, and one, so people are starting to raise their hands, so please have your hands raised within the first nine minutes, as well as having any blue speaker cards. So we have Jennifer Griffin and Rhonda Frye.
Thank you, City Council. I'm a little bit concerned about the elimination or changing of four of our committees in the city. I've frankly never seen anything like this before, along with the agenda, it raises a lot of concerns. I personally think the Legislative Review Committee has been one of the most fundamental things in my life currently. It has fostered a great interest in legislative issues that are going on in California, other states, and nationally. I will say right now that we, there is a hostile body pushing laws through in the state that this year are trying to push SV 35 to limitless times, they're trying to eliminate SEQA in all forms, and it is important for the public to have access to things like the Legislative Review because this is their life, their times, their history. And I will tell you right now, I have been, because of what's been happening, I have been pushed to look to see what my ancestors did in Virginia. I have found things in there why they went to the fight that they did and they lost lives. You know, it, this is how bad it is. I'm also concerned about the Design Review Committee. We annexed, my neighborhood annexed, and we used the Design Review Committee because of the monster houses that were going in county, Cupertino had problems with them. And I really, really am offended that someone would be getting rid of the DRC when I spent so much of my life. It makes me feel like insulted, like that I, that everything I did in that time was not worth it, and who are they to say that what I did was worthless? It isn't. It's our state, we get to decide, this is the public. And I'm also concerned about this thing about, I don't really know what the Audit Committee is, but why are they making all these recommendations? I did not major in accounting or anything like that, but I'm very, very concerned that this, items that the Audit Committee are saying, it's like, it raises red flags. And the ERC, no way. I have two relatives that had illnesses and died from them, and they were probably from contaminated military or work sites. I have another brother who has sustained health issues because he worked at a superfund site when he was 19 years old in Mountain View, and it is still listed as a superfund site, you cannot have housing on it. I question again, why are we getting rid of all these things? I don't think that the new city council knows better. I am very, very concerned about this, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Rhonda Frye, welcome, Rhonda.
Hi, good evening again, Rhonda Frye, 40-year president of Cupertino. Yeah, I would have used different words, but I concur with Ms. Griffin's sentiments. There's such a long list that I went ahead and I got the agenda outside so I could remember all of the things that are changing. Look, we had this massive embezzlement, I can't imagine that it was the only thing that happened or the only thing that's left to be cleaned up. So we need eyes, and we need transparency, and so if we can get more transparency, that would be good, which actually, in a way, the Legislative Review Committee, I'd like to make the same comment. Legislative Review Committee, I'd like to make the same comment as well. Hopefully, the work, I know it's been mentioned, but I'd like to see it happen, that maybe we actually have a section in our City Council meetings that has a section of Legislative Review, and it comes to this body. And so every agenda item, we have Legislative Review. What's going on in the state? If we can't have it in the committee, let's have it in the Council and have it agendized, and if there's nothing going on, then you say there's nothing, but please, have it on the agenda. We need to know how our state laws are affecting us in Cupertino. On the Economic Development Working Group, it's concerning that it seems like it's opaque. How, I'd like to be a member. How can I become a member? I own a business in Cupertino, and I would like to be a member. And, you know, if you guys have trouble for the minutes, I understood there was an issue having staff potentially writing minutes. I'd be very happy to provide minutes to that body. We need to know what's going on and need to have a community. That's why we're here, right? That's why we have a wonderful staff. That's why we have a City Council, and that's why we have residents, because we want to work together to make things better for our city. Design Review Committee, on that one, you know, frankly, I think the architecture in Cupertino is pretty hideous. Other cities do have active Design Review Committees to see it. Obviously, it hasn't met in a long time, and that's quite obvious, because Cupertino is getting uglier by the day, and I think that we should have an appropriate Design Review Committee that is, that has, even has architects like other cities do on their Design Review Committees. And same thing, Environmental Review, couldn't have stated it better than Ms. Griffin. I also was an appointed member of that body, and I found it to be very useful for the city, and I'm sad to see it go. It should also be something that's, all these things should be actually agendized on our agendas. Thank you.
Okay, that is, those are all the blue speaker cards we have in Community Hall, so we will move to Zoom. We have three hands raised. Jean Bedord, Peggy Griffin, Jennifer Sharon, and now Lisa Warren. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Mayor Way and Councilmembers. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a resident of Cupertino. I am here to support the staff recommendations regarding consolidation of committees and to dissolve all subcommittees. You know, the overabundance of committees and subcommittees has been identified several times. Since these involve the Brown Act and they're governed by the Brown Act, they do take substantial staff time. These recommendations are very thoughtful changes that make sense to me. I particularly support dissolution of the Economic Development Committee. While well-intentioned, the structure of this committee was poorly constructed. Not only was the structure not well thought out, the interviews for this committee were held by the lame duck Council, not the incoming Council. And at that time, I strongly objected. I did sit in on the interviews and felt the applicant pool was not well-suited to achieving the goals of economic development. The city's largest employer was not represented, nor were the second-largest employers in the city, our public school. These organizations are not going to participate in meetings governed by the Brown Act. They are much more likely to participate in ad hoc working groups. In addition, a working group has the flexibility to include emerging companies, such as biotechnology. Cupertino already has one publicly traded biotech company, and my understanding is that some of the Valco, the Rise, as it's now called, commercial space is being designed for biotech under other lab-related companies, which don't provide for work from home. You have to work in lab. So I am urging you to approve all of the staff recommendations to streamline our city governance processes. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jean. And our final three speakers on Zoom are Peggy Griffin, Jennifer Sharon, and Lisa Warren. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Councilmembers and staff. I support the comments made by Jennifer Griffin and Rhoda Frye. I find that this action appears to be a way to eliminate committees with established members and recreate them with your new preferences. It's sold as a reduction of committees, but in reality, you're replacing two of them with your own different names. The Economic Advisory Working Group is a replacement for the Economic Development Committee. The Economic Development Committee was transparent. The, it had a wide range of members, nine members, two City Council, tech sector, retail, small business, hospitality, education, commercial sustainability, tech, and two of which were Cupertino residents. This was a big variety. Your ad hoc working group is four city staff, two council members, one Planning Commission, and four reps from the Chamber. The Chamber has approximately 200 members. The city has 2,000 business licenses. You are not representing the majority of the business community in our city. This is not, it's, this is pay-to-play, and there's no documents, no minutes. The public can't attend. It happens behind closed doors. This is not transparent. The Environmental Review Committee replaces another committee you just mentioned. Why? There's an established, codified committee with minutes and members. This is just a way to eliminate the people and pick your own people. This is not helping our businesses. This is not helping our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Jennifer Sharon, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening again. I'm speaking again as a resident only tonight. I'll be very quick. I urge the Councilmembers to support the staff recommendations on this item. I've seen how the Council in 2023 has been prioritizing efficient and respectful Council meetings, which is greatly appreciated. These changes will also improve the bureaucracy of our city and make it more efficient and less wasteful of our city's staff hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And our final speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So as usual, I'm agreeing with Rhoda and Peggy, that should be no surprise, and Jennifer Griffin in this case as well. I love Rhoda's ideas of having things, information as part of an agenda when it's not available anywhere else. The problem with that is you're only going to get it every two weeks, where it should be far more available, should be available at your fingertips, on a website that regular residents understand how to use. I will speak mostly to the Economic Development Committee dissolving. That was a well-thought-out, very justified need. And frankly, our mayor and others have already voiced, they weren't happy just because they didn't like the people, so just get rid of it. It's really sobering, I guess, what's happening. But I will, I sort of wish I didn't say that part, but it's a truth. An Economic Advisory Working Group, as been said, will have zero transparency, no documents, no minute, no opportunity for the public to participate. And mostly by the public, I'm referring to actual resident. It smells an awful lot like a, quote, stakeholder group, unquote, which have been problematic for years, not just in the city, but in other governments nearby, including school district, et cetera. A stakeholder group, I emphasized this with EMC at the beginning of the Housing Element process in November of 2021. It's got a really bad taste in people's mouth to say stakeholder group, because the stakeholders are chosen and secretly chosen, and people don't even know who they are, because they don't have access to meetings. And this is a perfect example of that. So I would hope that you'd reconsider, but I have very little faith that you will as a whole, and it's unfortunate. I guess that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Mayor, that is the final speaker.
Right, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Thanks for all the public comments. I'm going to bring it back to Council for discussion for five minutes each. Who would like to start? Go ahead, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. I'm just going to make a very brief comment. I think this agenda item had too many parts to it. It should be broken up into each separate committee, and so that the public can understand it better and review each item with, more thoroughly with regards to, you know, just one item, the Design Review Committee. They do have access to an architect. There's a whole section in the municipal code on that that's being changed. So I have served on the Planning Commission, the Environmental Review Committee for, gosh, it's four years there. Let's see, the Legislative Review Committee as well, and I worked along with the previous Council with regards to the Economic Development Committee, the, selecting that new committee membership. So the, with regards to the Economic Development Committee, I wrote an email, which is included in the agenda packet, back in 2019, addressing the problems with the Economic Development Committee and with regards to the Brown Act, because it had been in existence since 1996, and it was comprised of, I believe this is already stated, four Chamber of Commerce members, and I believe there's around 200 businesses that belong to the Chamber of Commerce. One of the things I did last year was get the business licenses promoted to have those put online. We have over 2,500 licensed businesses in Cupertino. In contrast, I also collected all of the Economic Development Committee meeting minutes since its inception, and those are also available in the agenda packet if people would like to actually take a look at what they were doing, because you might be surprised, because you had four Chamber members, four staff members, two members of the Council, and one Planning Commissioner. So it's, I seriously suggest that you take a look. I'm deeply concerned and dismayed at the suggestion of having a working group. I appreciate that an alternative suggestion was made to the Council, but every effort was made by the previous Council in order to bring about transparency and accountability with the Economic Development Committee, so the public would know how the individuals were selected. It was a public process. Those meeting minutes, to my knowledge, haven't come to the Council from that meeting. I'll look it up. And, and we provided the ability for the public to have all of the meeting minutes and every, all of the information about what they were doing, because some of the earlier meeting minutes, when it was previously happening, it looked as though staff was coordinating to try to assist particular business members. So that's why I think you should really take a look, because it's, some curious things happen there. I am concerned that the current Audit Committee is not wanting to roll up their sleeves and do the work that is tasked for them in the municipal code. And so as I said, I had been on the Audit Committee and chaired the Audit Committee, and one of the things that struck me was that I was reading what the codified requirements of it were, and it became very clear that we were supposed to be looking at monthly reports, and that Audit Committee had only been meeting as little as three times a year. And there's, so they were, they were not doing what they were tasked to do, and it seemed like a very innocent question, and then it snowballed into, wow, we haven't been doing our job for, this committee hasn't been doing their job for decades, and the Finance Department had not been directing that committee, because that's where our liaison is from. They weren't directing that committee to do their job. And now that it's been discovered, and it's, and we've had a few months, and we've had this response to the grand jury about how we're looking at things and being very transparent about it, it's being rolled back. So that's, that's really upsetting. One of the benefits we get, moving on to the Environmental Review Committee, one of the benefits that we get from the Environmental Review Committee is we get, just like the Audit Committee, you get a first set of eyes on those environmental impact reports, the MNDs, and it isn't just coming to the Planning Commission and then to Council, because if you've looked at these environmental reports, they are thousands of pages. They're really long, and you do want to have as many touches on it as possible so that people are having an opportunity to look at it. And it's the same with the Audit Committee. We've had 14-year embezzlement, and we need people to look at these documents before they come to Council. The municipal code, the previous councils who put that in it, having the monthly Treasurer Report reviews, they had the right idea.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Do we have any other comments from Councilmember, Vice Mayor Mohan?
Mayor Way, I just wanted to restate the responsibilities or the changes, alleged changes made to the Audit Committee functions. If you look at the amendments, there are basically two words that have changed in the new DUDs powers. The monthly has been changed to quarterly, and the Treasurer's Report has been clarified to say Treasurer's Investment Report. We have only met once. We have probably discussed what the Audit Committee has or hasn't done for a much longer time than we have actually had the meeting. So I just wanted to point that out. And let me state one other thing. Another set of eyes, that's always a good thing, but the set of eyes that we as an Audit Committee or as City Council are supposed to provide are not the detailed accounting items. We have finance, that's one set of eyes. We have City Manager, we have another set of eyes, and hopefully, in between, there are other sets of eyes looking at these reports. So I'm not sure that, that we as City Council would be, have the need to look into specific items of the Accounts Payable Register, especially that Councilmember Moore appears to reference. The Accounts Payable, it's done. We have made the payments. These are items that have already been purchased, and the checks have already been cut. So the, I'm not sure what it is that we will be reviewing, other than to maybe say, why did we do this? So, and, which is not part of the Accounts Payable. That's a completely different set of discussions to have. Why did we pay this person so much? But I'm not clear that that's something that we can discuss as part of an Accounts Payable discussion. That's all I have to say.
So I like to take my five minutes to say a few things. I want to start with, can I have my five minutes? Thank you. I'd like to start with the Legislative Review Committee. I've been listening to it. I think it costs us $400 a year to do it, and all I heard was a lot of complaint, and then, yes, yes, we did write letters to the legislators. Have they been effective? To me, it's more effective if we go with the Cal Cities Legislative Action, put our cities together and fight for local control. That Legislative Review Committee, I do believe it needs to come to Council. I think five of us need to make that decision, not the two of it, and the money we spend on lobbyists and the hours the staff put on it for us to write very ineffective letters to the legislatures, I don't think that's the best time to use our staff time and our money. That's why I think the Legislative Committee needs to come to Council, and we will be informed. And we will be informed, we will write letters together, together with our colleagues, with our other cities. That's why I do believe, okay, let's go back to economic development committee. Everybody knows that it's an abstain from odd votes. It really needs to come to the new council. To do it 10 days before the new council's warning is not a good way to do it. And also, how does it say, we have economic director, she has expertise, she's, you know, working on this economic development. How am I going, are we going to have seven or nine members?
Nine members.
Nine members. That's going to represent one little fraction to be able to do this. I don't see how this could be done. I would like to trust our economic director, Tina Kapool, to work on this first. We can always evaluate whether it's effective or not. People complain the chamber only represents 200 of the how many, you know, registered business. Remember, a lot of registered businesses license, they're one person at home. If you're accountant, if you're real estate agent, you register. If chamber represents 200 and we have nine members represent one profession each, I don't know which one is more effective, but I'm not saying that we're going to give it to the chamber. I trust our staff, our economic director who were hired, who has the expertise, is going to work on economic development for the city. That's, I think we wouldn't let her do it first and see, we can always reevaluate if it is, is it, is it workable? Is it effective? Let's have a go on that. I'm going to skip the environmental design review. I'm going to go back to the audit committee. I'm a little tired of the attack on our newly attacked city, our vice mayor and our council member, Frum. I do believe they are elected, they're capable, they haven't changed anything except it's quarterly instead of monthly. But also, I want to go back to the embezzlement. It ended in 2014. It has nothing to do with Vice Mayor Mohan. I found it disattractive to completely always say it during the meetings to attack our vice mayor Mohan. I found that that doesn't build any credibility or any relationship. So I hope that stops. And on December 14th, when that stopped, it actually, because of the new enterprise resource planning software, new word that's being installed, that the current finance department actually traced it and found it out in 2018, this council or previous council had no credit in it. And actually, if, I want to repeat one more time, that we had a city manager, Jim Chubb, who was a financial expert, he credited our finance department for tracing it, find it, we got most of the money back. So I am really tired of listening to this 2014 embezzlement and saying that our staff is going to make, or they're not honest, they're going to be, you know, make a lot of mistakes. Yes, we are going to go out, you know, we, our staff, I'm going to read this, okay. "In conjunction with the upgrade of the city's enterprise resource planning software in 2014, the city incorporated a decentralized accounting structure to enhance segregation, purchasing, and financial duties. Our finance department is doing their duty to prevent this from happening again." It's not something, if you read clearly what happened, it's not something can be easily found. It's over 14 years of embezzlement from one person and I do believe our finance department is very aware of it. So I am really tired of listening to it to blend out our finance department, especially to blend it on our vice mayor Mohan. So I'm going to make that clear, that this should not be mentioned again and we would have a big report on this embezzlement. We got most of the money back. So I just hope that we trust our newly elected council members to make sure that they are as capable. I want to give the councilmember Moore her credit for finding that, my time is up, for really, you know, get back to finding a law so that we can have monthly report. Yes, that is really great. And Councilmember Moore, I give credit to you. I know you're very diligent, but let's trust our newly elected council members. They can do as good a job. I'm done. Thank you.
Do we have any more comments? If not, I think we all used our five minutes.
I think we all used our five minutes, but if Councilmember Frum hasn't said anything, I'm not letting him say it. Councilmember Frum hasn't said anything yet.
Yeah, so I will largely echo again the vice mayor's commentary. I do want to expand a little bit on the economic development committee. I just think that this committee, the way that it is constituted, is going to have a very hard time achieving its goal in particular because it is going to have to be everything conducted in public and everyone who is on it will have to be subject to a Form 700 disclosure, which means that the people whose expertise you're looking for can't have a conflict of interest in the city on the topic that they want to discuss. And that seems like it's going to frequently engender a recusal and I think that that's going to be a problem. I think that the suggestion that the city manager has made in the staff report is a good one. I think that it's sufficiently nimble. I think it allows for a more frank and open and honest discussion of issues that would frankly not occur if the meetings were forced to be occurring in public in a noticed forum that is simply too ossified and too difficult to react in. With respect to the LRC, you know, I share the mayor's general view. I have watched, I think, every single LRC proceeding except for the very first one and it simply has not managed to fulfill its purpose or at least it has not been able to prosecute the legislative agenda of the city. And I think that very frequently instead, it engenders the exact opposite response. We send a letter to Sacramento expressing a particular view on most, especially housing legislation, and then the result is frequently to point to Cupertino's opposition as a reason to support it instead. So I think that we have not been particularly effective through that mechanism and we should use a different one. With respect to the environmental review committee, I hope everyone understands very fully that the functions of this committee are not going away. They are simply being committed to different bodies. It will make us a lot more effective. It will remove what is frankly a very, very strange structure. There is no other city that has an environmental review committee structured the way that ours is. So I think that this is a very good and useful change. It will also ensure that there are fewer points in the process. It will streamline development applications in a way that is better for the city overall, for applicants, and for those who are interested in commenting on the process. I also think it saves us on time under SB 330 so that we don't wind up hitting the cap. Finally, with regard to the design review committee, you know, I'll underscore two things. This is a committee that has barely ever met and at least with regard to housing development applications, the state's push is generally speaking toward objective design standards. So if we want to ensure that there's some sort of meaning to our design review, we need to be adopting objective standards and putting that through a different process. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you for not using your five minutes. So do we have, I forgot, I was a little, do we have a motion on the table?
I asked the questions, but I have not commented after we heard the public comment.
All right, please.
Yeah. So I feel very concerned that we are using the word effective and streamlining to undermine transparency and accountability, which is essential in a public agency. And especially we use that as using the grand jury report, which contain a lot of false information to say we are doing this. It's very concerning. If we want to fix a problem, we need to be sure we have facts so that we identify the real problem rather going around and just fixing things without even knowing maybe we are making things worse. That seems to be what this council has been doing so far. I actually agree that we should disband the legislative review committee, but I would like, I have a question. So do we still have a current contract with lobbyists? Are we going to continue that?
Yes, we still do.
And that's an annually flat fee?
That is not an annual flat fee. It is a monthly retainer fee.
So if we don't use their service, do we have to pay the same amount or we then will be reducing our payment?
So the lobbyist that the city retains is not only to support the legislative review committee, they also have other functions that they carry.
So could you outline what other work that they do for the city?
I don't have their scope exactly. More than happy to send you the signed contract.
Okay, and thank you, the signed contract. And also I would like to get their, to know that exactly what they are serving the city for so that would be great to know. And then they, so that means they can still provide council legislative updates?
They are still working on that.
Okay.
And they're working directly with city attorney's office on that.
Okay. And then I want to clarify that my, I think amendment for the item in the last study session was not to bring the working group and it was a little mischaracterized. My intent was for this to be brought to a study session so the council can discuss how best to achieve the goal we need to achieve that was originally intended with the economic development committee. And Mayor Hong mentioned that there are only nine members, but that's specifically why this meeting has to be a public meeting so that members of the public can comment and others who have financial interests can serve on the committee, they can always comment, which is why we have five council members representing the entire Cupertino. But the ones who are making decisions have to declare no financial interest. With the working group, the very concern is the people who have financial interests who will benefit will then now have a backdoor meeting with the city staff and the public will have no idea what they are talking about until the annual report a year later and maybe all, and all this, and the people who want to get on the working group like RODA probably won't be accepted and who, this kind of closed-door meeting has provided access to only certain, certain elites in Cupertino. And that's really not a democratic process. So I still don't understand, except the Brown Act requirement, economic work committee, which will bring economic benefit to Cupertino, we cannot invest a little bit of city staff hours to provide a publicly accessible, that could provide equitable access to all the businesses and all the public to attend and understand what they are recommending to the council. And somehow that's not a well-spent city hours and time. And if this council cannot support that, it's, so we support a more closed-door, quid pro quo process where people are benefiting each other behind closed doors, that's really not the way we should go. We are going backwards. This is really undemocratic. Thank you.
Do we, so we are at 9:35, actually, we were right on time. So does the council want to have another round of couple minutes input or we're okay with a motion and a second?
I'd like a motion.
Okay, so I think, I don't see a board of support that we're going to have a couple more minutes, but with a motion and a second, maybe we could open up to another couple minutes of support, of discussion. Okay, so do we have a motion?
Yes, I move to adopt the staff report on the committees.
Do we have a second?
So I will, I will second, but I'd ask for the city attorney's view on how we need to read the request for the motion.
So, so I think that the motion could be as simple as to adopt the staff recommendation and request that the first reading of the ordinance be waived. I think that would be sufficient to meet legal requirements.
Councilmember Frum, you're going to make a friendly amendment or?
So I will make a friendly amendment to adopt the staff recommendation and that the reading, the first reading of the ordinance number 232247 be waived.
Vice Mayor Mohan, would you accept the friendly amendment?
I will second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second and I'm going to give each council member a couple minutes for deliberation again.
Mayor Way, clarification, Councilmember Frum, can you also clarify your position on the resolution?
Yes, I am in addition moving that we adopt resolution number 23-026.
Does original mover needs to second that or it's?
Yes, the original movement would need to agree with that amendment.
I will second it.
Okay, so I'm going to give everybody a couple minutes to deliberate. Councilmember Moore, do you have your lights on?
Yes, I do. Thank you. So I would like to have it clarified perhaps by the treasurer, what the difference is between the monthly treasurer's report and the monthly investment report. So that is a question and while that's, if that's possible. And then with regards to the Gonzales question, if they're on retainer, would their invoices explain what their work has actually been? Because I'd like to see a copy of the invoices, if that would show more specifically what they've been working on.
So in terms of the treasurer's report, I'm going to ask the administrative services director to walk us through up the differences. I will just send out the contract for our lobbyists to all council for your reference. We can pull the invoices. I don't believe that it describes the functions that they have carry. I mean, their invoice is not as detailed, but we can definitely provide that to you.
We can have the invoices. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Kristina, if you can provide a response to Councilmember Moore's question.
This on, yeah. I want to make sure, so the question was, describe the difference between the two monthly treasurer's reports. Is that correct?
Correct. What's the difference between the monthly treasurer's report and the monthly treasurer's investment report?
So the monthly treasurer's report specifically shows receipts, dispersments, and fund balance on a monthly basis. The monthly treasurer's investment report shows the investments the city has made during that month and also gives a report of market conditions and things that are occurring. So any transactions that occurred during that month and an update on market conditions for the investment report.
Okay, if I may through the mayor, so those monthly investment reports are generated by Chandler and US Bank. Is that correct?
So staff does a piece of work on them as well and then the major reports are the attachments, those are done by Chandler.
Okay, but the actual investing is done by Chandler and US Bank?
That's correct. And then staff reviews that work as part of the monthly treasurer's report to make sure whatever transactions they transacted in or anything that got cashed in, that we're able to see those transactions.
Okay, so the changes to the municipal code will make it so the audit committee is no longer looking at the monthly treasurer's report, the receipts, dispersments, and fund balances. They will no longer be looking at that. And instead of looking at the monthly investment report and having that, receiving that report from Carlos, I believe his name is, that's going to stop. So they would only have a quarterly investment report from Chandler and US Bank.
That's correct for the audit committee, but those reports will still be coming to city council for review. So the reports are still going to be made and brought to city council.
Okay, and what happens to accounts payable?
Accounts payable still come on a monthly basis. So as they did prior to, to the council, as they did prior to having audit committee review them.
Okay, so audit committee had been getting the accounts payable, which was a new thing, and they had been getting the monthly treasurer's report. That's gone. Okay, thank you.
Correct. And just a point of clarification, 41004 does not have the requirement that accounts payable be attached. It's simply that receipts, dispersments, and fund balance be reported on. And so that, that accounts payable was added as a recommendation of the subcommittee for the treasurer's format review.
Okay.
So now what we're doing is taking the reporting back to what is required by the code.
Okay, so we don't have to do the minimum, which is what we're doing here. We're doing the minimum.
Well, we're effectively still providing both documents. We just didn't need to provide them together. We've always provided the AP reports.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
So, um, I, I do have a question before you go, Kristina. So, um, all the reports, monthly disbursement will come to council?
Correct.
So all five council members still have our eyes on it?
That's correct.
So councilmember Moore, even she's not on the audit committee, she still has eyes on all those, uh, reports?
That's correct, so the monthly reports would still be coming to city council. AP reports will still be coming to city council.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you. My time, I think, is still running. Okay, um, so, thank you. Um, with regards to, um, the reports not coming to audit and coming to council, we're receiving, so like for this agenda item, this agenda, agendized meeting, I should say, um, the agenda came out a Wednesday evening, okay? And now we're going to have no safety net of the audit committee, which has three finance individuals on it, and, and then the two council members. Um, so that, that was supposed to have been our, our, our layer of expertise in the finance world before it comes to council. So we will have agendas that will have all of the accounts payable, the monthly report, the monthly treasurer's report, the investment report, no pre-check, no pre-check, except for once in a while on the investment report. And it's all gonna be coming at meetings which will have EIRs in them. And so I, you're, you're asking for, um, this is increasing risk and reduces oversight. And I think that's a really, it's a foolish idea.
Um, okay, thank you, councilmember Moore. Um, I just wanna make one clarification. I do read and check everything, so I think five eyes are pretty good. And, um, yeah, and you still have the eyes on it too, councilmember Moore, so I wanna open up to other people for two minutes, please.
So, um, I think in, in, in the past, we really have benefited from being able for the public or council member to ask questions on accounts payable or monthly treasurer's report when it's on the council agenda, when it's not just informational item. And now if it's off-agenda informational item, what we have found out in the past, for example, that we have been paying organization $16,000 without any contract, that we find out, um, another, this organization receives $64,000 in payment for a website. Turns out that benefits their own members. So how will the council be able to ask questions if we find something we would like? Because the embezzlement, if someone had been looking at the accounts payable, likely someone would be asking, how come we are paying this organization? But now with off-agenda memo, I would like to understand what's the process for asking questions, so we can bring up, uh, so the, the council can really provide oversight.
Andrew, do you wanna answer, or do you wanna?
I can answer. Um, through the mayor's show, questions can still be directed to staff once the packet is released on the Wednesday prior to council meeting. If you have any particular, uh, questions for a item in the staff report, we're more than happy to provide a background for you.
Now, the, the public won't be able to ask questions, and then we would not be able to go back and forth to ask, uh, more questions, because especially in financial matters, this kind of backforce, help bring clarity to provide more accountability and transparency.
So the information will be made available on city's website, available to all members of the public. If any member has any questions, they can reach out to staff, just as members of the public reach out to us this time for this packet.
But on the website doesn't mean there is a webpage dedicated to it. The member will have to seek in the council agenda item for that.
I'm sorry.
There is note, so how, when would the council bring?
Point of order, I see that the time has elapsed.
Councilmember Fron, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, in, in addition to asking questions directly of the city manager or of staff, if necessary, if council wants to, we can always agendize an item in the future for actual discussion, if we deem that that's appropriate. I think that this process is much better in terms of ensuring that you can get your questions answered. You can get them answered in a professional fashion that doesn't put staff on the spot at the last second to explain some, some piece of, of minor minutiae. Um, and instead, we, if you need to actually have it on an agenda item, we can do that in the future.
Thank you. Do we have more discussions? I think we are not going to, um, because I already gave extra time, and, I do believe it's time we can put on a vote, if that's okay with the council members.
I disagree.
Um, okay, you can make a motion to disagree with me.
Oh.
You can make a motion to more, more time to discuss, if you want to do that.
We can make a motion to pause, um, pause the council procedures, so that we have more time to discuss.
Do we have a second?
What do you want?
Second.
Yeah, I can see that, so I don't have to raise your hand. Uh, so let's go to a vote, please.
The motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
Okay, so, um, we, we do have a motion, we have a second, and I think we have a lot of discussions. Our points are crossed. So I would like to call for a light vote, please.
Can, I, I would like to propose the motion, because I would, I would like, um, I support the Legislative Review Committee to be
You mean you're gonna make a substitute motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I think she wants to make a substitute motion. Yeah.
Yes, yeah, I would, I would recommend making the motion.
Yeah, so my motion would be adopting the resolution number 23-206 for, um, to repeal and replace the resolution number 18-101 for regarding Legislative Review Committee. However, I'd like to, um, remove the section which I mentioned that might create, um, misunderstanding for, um, this section that says this Legislative Review, um, Committee that was established by the previous, previous 2018 council does not comply with municipal code, because the advice has changed. So apparently, previous council, the city council attorney's office had, did not think so. Then adding this paragraph gives incorrect background information about the resolution. So my motion is to approve this resolution without this paragraph, by striking this paragraph. And only this part.
The rest of the motion?
I would like to vote on this separately, yeah. So that's my motion.
City Attorney Jensen, can we do that?
Yeah, I, so I, we, we could certainly do that. To clarify, is, is your motion to approve, i- 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 is your, is your motion to amend the motion on the table to strike this paragraph? Or is it a motion simply to strike this paragraph from?
Um, motion to approve this resolution and striking this paragraph.
And, and what about, what about the other items in the motion on the table, including the adoption of the ordinance?
This motion does not include those.
So it's limited to adopting this resolution with this paragraph stricken?
Yeah.
Okay, th- th- thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
That's the clarification. Thank you. Uh, City Attorney Jensen, do we have a second?
Um, I would like to, um, second that with a, a friendly amendment, if you would be so kind. Um, I would like to, uh, and you can say no, but I would like to retain 2.96, the Economic Development Committee, and to strike the edit to the Audit Committee, 2.88, um, so that the Audit Committee will continue to review, um, those documents on a monthly basis and provide that, um, level of security for us.
If I, if I'm clear, councilmember Chow was only make that motion, not including all the rest. She's only, she's separating that motion as independent motion.
You can make another motion on the second part.
Okay, so, um,
We vote.
Okay, councilmember Chow, would you please restate your original motion, because I don't think I understand it correctly?
Just adopt the number one staff recommendation for the Legislative Review Committee with resolution number 23-206, but revised by, um, removing the paragraph that the, this, um, the 2018 resolution does not comply with the municipal code.
Okay, um, through the mayor, uh, so councilmember Chow, what are you, what are you suggesting with regards to items two and three? Or you're just breaking it out? Okay, so I'll, I'll second, I'll second yours without the, without the friendly amendment. But so are you wanting none of the changes from item two and three, so all, all we would be passing through would be item one? Is that correct?
Um.
With some changes?
Yeah, there is, this, this motion does not include the, the rest, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, and I definitely second that. Thank you.
We have a substitute motion on the table?
Uh, yes, yes, mayor.
Okay, so let's vote on that unless we have another substitute motion. No, let's, let's do a light vote.
The motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
Okay, so we still have the original motion on the table and a second. Shall we vote on that?
I have a substitute motion.
Okay.
Um, substitute motion, um, that we would approve the recommended action, item one, and for item two, we would modify it, um, to retain 2.96, so we would not be repealing it, and to, um, remove the change to 2.88, which is under item two, and three, find the actions exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Madam Senior Clerk, did you get out of that, out of that?
I didn't get the very beginning.
Okay, so, um, that we would, uh, move to approve item one, the adopting resolution 23-026, and for item two, we would alter it, approve it, but alter it by retaining 2.96, the Economic Development Committee, and striking the edits to, uh, to 2.88, um, the Audit Committee, and three, find the actions exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, um, if there's no discussion, can we vote by light, please?
Motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
Okay, so now we still have the original motion on the table with a second. Are we ready to vote?
Um, I have a comment. Okay, so there, through the mayor, um, there was a, um, a mention about a, um, an entity which was receiving monies without a contract, uh, over the past five years. It was over $200,000. Um, so, and, and I do, do think that information is in the agenda packet, and it is an item that we've been waiting since, uh, June of last year to come back. So I'm, I'm deeply concerned about this working group, Economic Development Committee, after seeing, um, the history, and I, and I don't think that there's been an adequate reporting to council about it.
I don't think we're discussing it right now. Uh, we are going to, either you have a substitute motion, or we're gonna vote on the original motion. All right, so let's vote on the original motion by light.
Point of order, mayor. Uh, before the vote, may I, may I ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title?
Yes, mayor?
Yes, please.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 23-2247, repealing municipal code chapters 2.84, 2.90, and 2.96, adopting municipal code chapter 17.02, and amending municipal code chapters 2.32, 2.88, 9.20, 19.08, 19.12, 19.28, 19.104, and 19.124.
Okay, so, um, let's vote by light, please.
The motion carries with Chow and Moore voting no.
Okay, we are just 25 minutes. Uh, do everybody wanna take a break? Does anybody need a break? A five-minute break? Yeah, please, thank you. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Yes, uh-huh, mhm. Now we're gonna move into the consent agenda number five and six that's been pulled. I'd like to make a motion to consider consent agenda six first. Um, we're gonna take public comments, uh, on that item two. So, um, do I have a second, please?
Second.
So I have a move in a second to, to, um, to go over the consent agenda six before consent agenda five. May I, may we have a vote? Oh, sorry, Kirsten.
Just the councilmember Chow, if she could please vote with her lights.
Um, I made a motion to move consent agenda six above five, so we can consider the bench first. Because we have a lady who's been waiting this a third time, so, um, so, um, do you agree? All right, thank you. So now we're?
Sorry, the motion carries, um, with Chow voting no and Moore abstaining.
Okay, thank you. So we are moving to consent number six, consider adoption of a resolution establishing the commemorative, commemorative, commemorative bench delegation policy, and waiving the commemorative fee for Marilyn Francisco, continued from February 7th. So do we have a staff report on this one?
Mayor Way, we do have a staff report. We do not have staff presentation ready for, um, this item, given that this is on consent. Um, I would like to point out that there are, uh, a number of communications, uh, questions received from council that we provide a response in the written, um, communication that was published yesterday.
Okay.
I do have acting director Chad Mosley available to answer any further questions that council may have, uh, for this item.
Okay, so let's go to council questions before we take public comment. Do we have questions from council? I, I do have one question, Chad. Um, so the, the lady, Marilyn Francisco, I believe she is online? Or she indicates she will be online. When did she start, um, the application? I remember it's May 2022?
Mayor, members of council, Chad Mosley, acting director of Public Works. Marilyn was online earlier. I do not believe she's online any further. With respect to her application, she did apply for, uh, a plaque in early 2022, if I recall.
Yeah.
And that item was brought to council on May 3rd, 2022.
Okay, thank you. That's what I remember, it's in May. I wanna clarify that, Fran, uh, she's been here, I think this is her third time, so, just she dropped out, maybe it's too late. So any other questions from the council? Go ahead.
This is a question for, for Chad. Um, have we placed plaques before, um, based on the current policy?
Previously, there, I mean, there have been plaques that have been placed in the past. None of them have been placed based on, uh, this policy, um, since this policy has not been enacted. Uh, and in fact, we've, uh, not placed any, um, new plaques, um, since May of 2022.
Uh, so there was a plaque placed back then?
There have been plaques that have been placed in the past, um, years ago, but nothing in, nothing recently, uh, with respect to this policy.
Okay, so there were, there were, I think, two examples that were in the, um, agenda packet, and it looked as though those individuals had, um, purchased an item or made a donation. How did that work?
Um, I would have to get further information on that, but typically in the past, we've required, uh, that, um, people that wanna donate, um, commemorative benches, actually purchase the bench and the plaque, and then the city would install those.
Okay, and may I ask, is there a specific location where those benches are supposed to go?
Um, my understanding is there's no specific location. We typically work with the person interested in donating the plaque, uh, and trying to find a location that, um, would serve the public, um, does not hinder the, the public's use of parks. Um, with that stated, uh, you know, currently, uh, the Parks and Rec Commission has provided recommendations on a number of benches to be placed in parks throughout the city, including some, um, recommended locations. And, uh, I think, uh, when we go to install benches in the future, we'll look at opportunities to, to place benches in those locations.
Okay, so that wouldn't be, the, the staff would, I mean, the, the council would have no input on that? And so memorial benches with, with, um, basically any kind of, uh, writing on that plaque could be, could be put anywhere? So for instance, at Creekside Park, if I wanted to put a, um, put a bench with a plaque commemorating anyone, um, free, free speech, I guess, um, that could happen?
Um, so with respect to the bench policy, uh, we have indicated that individuals to be commemorated, um, should have a direct connection with Cupertino, and additionally, the And additionally, the language that is being indicated on the plaque needs to be, you know, in memory of, in loving memory of, or dedicated to the individual's name. We're limiting the, the language that can be placed on these plaques to hinder potentially certain, you know, statements that may be controversial. We're basically trying to provide these plaques as memorials for individuals who are directly associated with Cupertino.
So if I understand correctly, that if, if you had a family member that didn't live in Cupertino, you would not be able to have a, have a bench plaque commemorating them. Is that right?
That may be the case, yes.
Okay, so if you have family who are in the military or stationed overseas and, and something happens to them, that they would not be considered to be associated with Cupertino?
Again, we would look at this on a case-by-case basis. If this person lived in Cupertino, they would have a direct connection with Cupertino. Potentially for somebody who lives in Cupertino and an immediate relative, they're requesting a plaque for an immediate relative, that may be considered. If somebody wanted to put in a commemorative plaque for, let's say, Vladimir Putin, we would probably discourage that. That is the reason why we're looking for a direct connection to Cupertino.
That sounds like a free speech problem. Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. I could, I could, I could step in briefly. So the issue is, you know, once we open this, this kind of public space, open to general members of the public, we can't discriminate based on viewpoint. However, we can set standards based on, on the content, reasonable time, place, manner restrictions on the content. So that's, that, that's why, you know, there's, there's a relatively narrow range of statements that we're allowing on the benches and trying to prescribe some, 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 some viewpoint-neutral regulations for this kind of memorial bench, you know, to avoid an issue where, you know, there's, there's a First Amendment issue and the city might wind up associated with speech that, you know, we, we wouldn't think reflects well on the city or our parks. You know, and we would have a hard time necessarily perhaps restricting that due to the First Amendment.
And all of the city parks are, are fair game for these memorial benches? Is that, is that correct? Because honestly, I would prefer, and I kind of had thought that Memorial Park with the word memorial had some kind of historic significance with regards to that. And, and so then my other concern is that we're looking at a memorial park reconstruction. And what happens to these benches? What if you want to have them all re-coordinated? You're looking, your, your architects are looking for a different look. I'm, I'm concerned about that. And I don't necessarily want to go to each and every park and end up seeing a memorial bench. Maybe, maybe that's not something everyone wants to see throughout the city. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? If not, I would like, go ahead.
So has the city ever placed a plaque bought by a citizen on a city property? When they did not make any other donation, but they just bought the plaque and want to put place on a city property?
I'm unaware of, of that occurring. Doesn't mean it hasn't. I'm just not aware of all plaques, you know, the condition of all plaques.
So the past ones that the staff mentioned in the staff report, the both parties donated the bench. And then the plaque was on the bench they donated, right?
I'm aware that that has been the case for, for some. I'm not sure if that's the case for all of them.
Are there, you mean there are other benches donated beside those two mentioned by the staff report?
Again, I don't have all the information of past plaques that have been installed. We're bringing this policy forward to basically dictate how these plaques will be installed moving into the future.
And then, so there, the own, so there was, there is a plaque, policy on plaque, but it was for maybe someone donated a building and then we would put a plaque to thank them for donating. That was the previous policy, right? That was the one that was, that was on the two thousand twenty-two council agenda.
I guess I'm not, I'm not sure what you're getting at there.
Um, so what I mean is, I want to clarify, the, the prior policy also does not apply to the case that we have in front of us.
Through the mayor, if I may, if I understand Councilmember Chow's question, I believe there was a naming policy that the council was contemplating. It's not the bench policy. It's to name a facility or a park or a place after certain criteria. I don't know if that policy has been finalized, but it, that's not the policy we're coming before you. So this is a follow-up to council's direction from last May, when the bench request was made and council found that we don't have this current policy that we're bringing to you. So we're asking council to adopt a policy. So going forward, we will have some guideline for a situation like this.
So last May, when this item was on the council agenda, one of the attachment is adopted policy, not a new one, an adopted one. I think it is related to naming, but then one of the item is about plaque.
Could it be the donation policy?
Yeah. Okay, never mind. So then another thing, I think the council direction in that meeting was to bring this item back with proposed bench dedication policy. But the, the request for a plaque would be considered after the policy is adopted. That was the council direction, right?
We're, we're bringing the policy before you, and with that policy is also the option to consider the plaque for Marilyn Francisco.
Yeah, so we are not exactly following the council direction. And this item is not on the adopted work program for this year, which we know is already very full. And the council did not propose to add this item on our work program for this year. Is that correct?
I answered that. Through the mayor, so this, this is not on the work program. You're absolutely right. We are following council's direction to, to develop the policy. Given that Marilyn Francisco has been patiently waiting, so staff went ahead and made a recommendation on our own. You're absolutely right.
Hmm, the council has made a direction on many other items that we did not put, eventually put on our work program because of priority.
I'm not understanding. Is that a question for me?
No.
Okay. Thank you. So let's open up for the public comment, please. Madam Senior Clerk?
Yes, we have one speaker card from Jennifer Griffin. And I will check the Zoom. Please have your hands raised in nine minutes. Welcome, Jennifer.
I, yeah, good, it's working. Yes, thank you for, the placement of this is a bit bizarre, but that's okay. I'm glad we got to it. As you all understand, commemorative benches, et cetera, are very, very personal. And I think that it would be important for the city to have a policy of this. My mother lived in Pacific Grove for many years. There was benches all over the city, especially near the ocean, that had names of people who enjoyed the sea. Santa Cruz County, where she is now, we find these all over the place. Downtown San Jose has these also. I understand that it's a very, very complicated issue. I am familiar with the naming issue over the fish tank and the library with Sandy James in about two thousand and four. And the upshot was that you're supposed to have passed away before anything can be named from you. I am suggesting now that we name the two-eighty formerly Hennepin Sarah Bike Trail after Steve Jobs. He, he is a living legend in this city and he worked in both. He, I won't even go into it. I think we should do that now. At this point, I think that it would be really, really prudent for the city council to set up a research group to try to come up with a policy about memorial benches. We have lots of parks. We have Memorial Park. I think that another thing we could do is have funds that families could donate money to, maybe a military fund, a fund for people who liked environmental issues, people who liked nature, birds, et cetera. And then have, have a standard plaque on the bench in memory of so-and-so. And, you know, you can even have the birth date, death date. I've seen this all over the place. My family has been giving out two music scholarships at Homestead High School for the last eight years in honor of my brother. We're very, very happy with it. And I, my family also gives out a, an annual scholarship in the hometown in Virginia. And I think that that, for me personally, has been one of the highlights of the memorial of a person. And I think that, I, I understand that Ms. Francesco, she wants to honor her friend or whoever this family member was. I think it's time that we have a policy set up on this. And I think that we can do it. We can look at what other cities do, et cetera, the county. You might want to have a standard bench. This isn't the first time the city has had meetings about what type of bench furniture go along, like Stevens Creek Boulevard, et cetera, et cetera. And it's probably time to do that because, you know, I, I hate to say this, but I spend a lot of times at cemeteries. Okay, yes, I do, but they are tremendous learning places. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And so we have no further speaker cards. We'll move to Zoom. We have one hand raised from Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Evening, councilmembers and staff. I've sent suggestions on the form and policy via email. Please see my email comments. They're based on location of the bench. I think that the Parks and Rec Department should, should be involved, not just Public Works. A verification, the policy does not specify who verifies the required connection to Cupertino. Application form, the form should state that there needs to be a direct connection to the city of Cupertino on the form when they fill it out. And it should also state that no organization or groups will be considered. That said, public benches are paid for with public tax dollars. When a plaque is on a bench, it is assumed that the person paid for that bench. You are setting a procedure, you are setting up a procedure, which is a good start. But then you turn around and immediately make an exception to waive the fee. Procedures work best if the rules are followed. Over and over, I've heard the whole council said that procedures need to be in place. This is the time to follow the procedure. Exceptions mean people can pull strings, that no people, and it implies favoritism. If you follow the procedure, the rules are in place and people know where they stand. Please make the changes suggested on the application form and deny the fee waiver, but encourage the applicant to donate in honor of their love plan. This is a very emotional time and having a bench in their memory is fine, but it should not be an existing bench. You're setting a precedent that the next person coming along will want to do. I want to just get a fee waiver and just slap a plate on an existing bench. Please do not set this precedent. You're, you're on the right track with the procedure. Follow your procedure. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And Mayor, I see no other speakers.
Thank you, Madam Senior Clerk. I want to tell Jennifer that I really appreciate your donation to the Homestead ban. I was school board member. I was there almost every year and we heard about the ban. It's really great. Thank you so much. And I want to bring this back to council for discussion. Do we want to make a motion and second first before discussion, or do we want to discuss first? I'm gonna do it at the pleasure of the council. Yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Moore?
I prefer that we discuss first.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate the comments we just heard from, from Peggy. And I do agree with the Parks and Rec issue in particular because we want to make sure that our parks are well-designed and that we're not putting these concrete pads and these benches in areas and then changing our mind about them, like I had mentioned about Memorial Park. I'm worried that we, we might be constraining the use of that space or making it more difficult and more expensive to change things in the future. A couple of years ago, I had the pleasure of being at the Lady Bird Johnson Botanic Garden in, outside of Austin. And it, you have to pay to go in, but there are many of the garden rooms, I'll call them, were dedicated by various families and individuals. And there are beautiful benches which have plaques on them throughout the whole park. It's, it's absolutely beautiful. So if you, if you got a chance just to visit it online, go ahead and do that. It's, it's awesome. But what I liked about it was that these, these benches were very artistic and there, it wasn't just your typical park bench. There were some in the shapes of dragonflies and butterflies and, and, you know, beautiful patina on them. So, you know, I like that this, this bench idea is here, but I would like it to have some architectural oversight about it so that we're kind of reaching a little bit above and beyond. And maybe there's areas where you, you donate, you, you donate the five thousand dollars and you get a typical bench. But if you want to have this, you know, glorious artistically designed bench, you can, you can pay some more and have your name put on that. Or if you'd like to have some other decorative item, perhaps outdoor sculpture garden in, in some area, if you'd like to donate that, that, that option could potentially be, be made available and have this... But have the items be something that was decided for by, by professionals so that these, these items are very tastefully done. As we all know, we've been receiving emails in support of the DOLAs. And, and one of them actually was asking for benches in an area, which I think is an interesting request. And, and, but if an area hasn't been kind of scoped out by Public Works in coordination with Parks and Rec, then we might not have these items put in the best locations. And it, so I think that that would help. So, and I do agree that this is setting a precedent with regards to waiving so much money for an individual that, that, that it's problematic, and I don't think we should be getting into it. You know, I am very sorry that this item came to council as it did when, when it did. There was, it seemed as though there was a misinterpretation of established code or policy in, in the past that the staff had been able to provide the, the plaque on benches. And we have these examples where it was followed correctly, but this, this item, you know, something happened with it. But I don't think we should be setting the precedent and just giving away city resources in this manner. I'm, you know, I'm sorry to say that. All right. With that, I think the question of who verifies, if the person has connection to Cupertino. I don't know what ideas you have on how to do that. I think it, it could be complicated. If you do have, if anyone from staff has some idea how that could happen, you're just gonna have to take someone's word for it. I don't know. So I'll leave it with that. Thank you.
Okay, do we have other comments? Council, Vice Mayor Mohan?
So my understanding is this is not something that happens very frequently. If I looked at the staff report, it's two, two instances in the last several years. So, so I'm not sure we should be too concerned that there will be like an avalanche of bench commemoration, commemoration requests. So I'm not, I would like to sort of move fast on this item. There is a five thousand dollar setup for ten years maintenance, installing the, the bench and the plaque. I would like to make an exception for Ms. Francesco. She has waited since May. She has waited since May, and it is to commemorate a loved one. And there's no question of setting a precedent. Once this, we approve this, this becomes policy, and this is the, Ms. Francesco's request is the only one in the pipeline, so there wouldn't be any question of a precedent. So I'd, I'd like to move forward on this.
Councilmember Chow?
Another question for the staff. So normally, when a community member brings a request that the city doesn't have any existing policy to support, wouldn't the response usually is just to deny the request without even bringing that to the council?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
So how, I wonder how come the request was even entertained?
I'm, I'm sorry, through the mayor, I'm not understanding that question.
So usually, as a community member brings something, they want to do a certain thing. The city current policy doesn't support a plaque on its existing bench. And normally, wouldn't the staff would just tell them that we don't have, allow that? And that's it? Rather than come to the council to adopt a new policy to allow this? So I'm just wondering, how come the staff had not denied the request and then somehow miscommunicated and then resulted in this applicant keep waiting?
So through the mayor, if I may, are we still talking about just the bench and plaque or overall policy? Just so I'm clear.
No, I'm, I'm just wondering how come the staff did not just reject the request?
In the staff report, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chad, and I think we have done similar installation in the past. We just don't have a policy.
No, that was when a bench was donated.
So my understanding is there is, there was a donation policy in place that allowed for certain donations, including plaques, and then I think with that policy, there was a requirement to come to council. I think when this was brought in May, there was a request to have a very specific policy for, for benches.
But that policy does not apply for the case when the, there is no donation, the only donation only cover the cost of the plaque. So that policy does not even apply in this case.
In this case, a plaque is being donated?
No, the, but that policy is supposed to cover a significant donation, and not just donating the plaque itself.
Through the mayor, I don't think this is a fair question for staff to answer, which is the reason why it came to council last May and you asked for a policy.
So in last May, on the staff report, the question was asked of council, what's the wording on the plaque? At that time, the plaque wasn't even ordered. And now, we are being told in today's staff report, the applicant purchased, went ahead and purchased the plaque. With the wording, she probably decide, and now that's a reason we should grant this request because they, she again did not follow the city policy.
So the reason we're offering council an opportunity to consider waiving the fees is because the applicant at the time had requested to place a plaque on an existing bench. The city did not have a policy in place at that time.
Does we usually reject such request? And usually, when a public makes a request and we don't have a policy to cover that, we would just reject the request?
I, I, again, I'm not sure how plaques were originally placed on benches when the first one came in. This was a request that was, that was provided in May. We brought it to council for their consideration. With this, we're bringing a policy forward for future, and we're giving council a chance to either accept the waiver or reject that waiver here. You are not being required to approve this waiver. We're just bringing this same request that was made last May forward to council for consideration. We, we do have a bench policy.
Yeah, okay, that's okay. I have limited time. So I really, really appreciate the staff for, for going out of your way to really serve the residents in this very extraordinary way. It's, I, I wish all the resident requests were treated the same way, so that we serve them equally. Thank you.
Any comments from other council members?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones, more questions that have come to mind now, primarily for the city attorney. First of all, thank you, Chris Jensen, for having answered my numerous forum analysis questions in the past on, on this topic. I really appreciate it. Apropos of something that councilmember Moore raised with respect to, you know, maybe there being certain places where these benches wouldn't be, say, places where certain residents wouldn't want to see them, perhaps they would expect to see them in Memorial Park and not in other parks. If we were to enact the policy that, that is before us today, would there be a problem with us later on restricting the specific parks that these benches could be placed in?
No, not at all. You know, part, part of the, the limited public forum analysis is, you know, whether the city chooses to open up a public space to speech by, by members of the public, and the city can always choose to, to open or, or close a space. So I wouldn't see any problem with specifying where these plaques would be allowed either now or later, or, and, and changing that over time.
Got it. And consistent with that, would that require us to, if we were to, for example, close a specific park to these types of benches, would we have to remove that in existing bench and place it somewhere else?
No, I, I don't think so, as long as we were, we're treating new applicants equally and, and not based on the viewpoint of their speech.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any, anybody else want to speak? I think you have a couple minutes, yeah? Please, councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you. So in the written communications from, I guess it was February 7th, the existing donation policy was included in there, and that was Resolution 17-102. The donation policy talks about the authority to accept and reject donations and the evaluation guidelines. And the, the city council may recognize a donation by a plaque affixed to the appropriate city building, facility, structure, equipment, or furnishings. The wording, size, type, and location of the plaque shall be determined on a case-by-case basis. When this item came to, to council, I don't know, maybe a year ago, it was, it was changed, the language was changed to, "The city council may recognize a donation of a plaque." That was the language change that was in the, in the staff report. And it was a pretty significant change because that's not what the, what the donation policy actually says. So you need to, a donation by a pla, a plaque, and then they talk about what these donations can be. So they talk about donations of any kind, restricted or unrestricted, which are valued above $25,000 must be presented to the city council, and the manager is authorized to delegate authority to accept donations valued at or below $10,000 to the director or head of the department for which the donation is intended. So this policy actually was in place at the time, in my opinion, and I think this actually should have been brought up, if it's not, you know, fully spelled out in the current staff report, that the language was changed when it was brought to city council, and I was the person who spotted it, I remember spotting it, and it was the, the issue with the word being "of" or "by." So it was changed to "of," and I remember having this discussion and with the council about it. And so I am surprised that this item has returned to us because the policy has been in place and it has been implemented properly in the past. So I, I, I do appreciate the bench policy. I would like to have Parks and Rec and Public Works think about where they would like these, these benches to be, what the design is going to be like in the city, and I, personally, I, I don't always want to be coming across a memorial site in every park. It, it changes, you know, my experience when I'm there, and I think other people would have that, perhaps, have that feeling as well. So I would like these to be contained. However, I do really like the idea about people being able to donate benches by this policy, and, and simply say, this is a gift from someone who just wanted to gift a bench for, for a park, or perhaps, you know, with regards to the DOLA request to have benches, perhaps someone would want to just donate it, one, it didn't have to be in memory of, or they, you know, perhaps they just wanted to, you know, share, share that item. Okay. So I wanted to make that clear. And also, with regards to this particular agenda item, it's difficult for me to navigate through these documents. So I had to dig into the February 7th written communications because I had remembered seeing all of these, all of these documents. They, to my knowledge, they did not get pulled forward into this agenda packet in the written communications to find it. So I had to go hunting through the, through the last ones. I think if we're going to give a red line or a change to a policy and you're referencing the previous policy, it would really help me save time if we can have whatever the old policy is. So the question was about the old policy. Well, it was, we have it. It was 17-102, Resolution 17-102. It was in place, it's been in place, I'm going to assume that's 2017 by the way they, they number these items. So I want to make that perfectly clear. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, councilmember Moore. I do have a question. I do not think that's a bench policy, is it?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Is that, is councilmember Moore's reference to that policy, was it a bench policy, or is it just a general gift policy?
I would have to look at that resolution.
Okay, because I don't think we had a bench policy.
I mean, if clerks can take a moment and pull it up, I don't believe we have a bench policy right now.
Because, okay, so I'm going to make my five minutes.
Mayor, if you mind, 17-102 is just the donation policy.
Right, okay. So I'd like to make my comment, five-minute comment. I remember the May, when it came to us, and I remember clearly, the council said to staff, you know, work on a bench policy and bring back to council. And I, I want to say, the staff did a great job. It's a simple policy, but to the point. If our staff is doing a good job, I really want to commend our staff for doing a good job, and also agree on it, even though we might say, how come we, we never know about it? But we really want to empower our staff to make good policies. And as to where do we put a bench, is it going to look good, which park to put it? I do think this is administration. I think our park, our public works with, probably will work with our park recreation and put a bench where it's going to look good, people are going to sit on it, and it's going to make the park look better, whether it's on, you know, which park, or it's Memorial Park, or is it, you know, I, I want to trust staff, and I think they can implement this. And I like this policy. It's simple, to the point, and I do think it's implementable. And as city attorney says, it also protects the, the city with a simple, you know, statement so that we have that way to, it's, you know, people are going to say it's amendment rights. So I do think this policy is good. As for Marilyn, yes, whether we think the staff did not follow things or not, but I want to agree with councilmember Chow. The staff did a good job of accommodating our resident, and I really want to say Marilyn has been very patient since May. She was in multiple meetings, unfortunately, she's not here, and maybe there's some misunderstanding or not, but I'm not going to go to the origin of it, but I want to say, she is our resident, she's been patient, she's been nice, and this is before this policy, and it's one-time exception, and we already have the bench. It's not like we're losing resources. I am inclined to give her that one-time waiver and adopt this policy so it's not going to happen again. It's not like another person kind of say, oh, she, you gave it to her, so I want it, and that, that would have to come to council. And again, I like the simplicity and effectiveness of this policy, and I think our staff did a good job, and I think they can implement it. We really do not need to go into details, and they're not going to put a bench where people are going to trip, or it's not going to look good. So my inclination is approve it. If we don't like it, we can always amend it. If we want some special benches, we can always add to it, you know, a butterfly bench, a dog bench for the, for the park. We can always, you know, implement, adjust it. So I am very inclined to approve it and give Marilyn a one-time waiver because of her patience and because she is one of our residents, and it is a good thing that we could give her that. So that's my comment. Thank you. Everyone used their five minutes, and I'm not going to say anymore. May I have a motion?
So I will move that we adopt Resolution Number 23-024, together with Attachment A, establishing the commemorative bench dedication policy and allow a one-time waiver of said policy for Marilyn Francesco.
I'm going to second that because I feel very strongly about, we really need to give Marilyn her bench. So it's being moved and seconded. Do we have any more?
Discussion.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Please, make it short, please.
Okay. So with regards to the bench policy, I appreciate that all of this is being worked out, but one of the things that stands out is that it is, to have a commemorative statement memorializing an individual or family, and it's, and it's referred to as memorial bench dedication. And that's something that I didn't exactly pay attention to first reading this, but as I had previously mentioned, it would be great if people could simply donate a bench because they want to donate a bench, and they don't necessarily want it to be a memorial bench. They would simply like to, to make, make a donation, perhaps they want their name on it, perhaps they want to be anonymous, but they would like to, to do that. And, and it might actually open, open the interest up from the public if they didn't feel like they needed to, you know, give, make it a memorial site. Maybe they just, you know, want to beautify a park and provide a nice place for someone to sit with their name on it or not.
Thank you, councilmember Moore, I agree with you.
Is there a way that we can have this, this altered? I don't know if you can do it on the fly right now, but is there a way that, that it could be a donation without the memorial part being insisted upon? Because the language is, is quite strict, that it's in memory of, in loving memory of, dedicated to. Thank you.
So we have a motion on the table for the memorial bench, and if we, yeah, this is the memorial bench policy. We could always come up with another policy, so that, that is, it has a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote? If we do, please vote by light.
I'm sorry, did we decide that we were finished deliberations? It seemed as though through the mayor that councilmember Chow had something to say.
Yeah, I actually would like to vote on this separately, because I feel very strongly about one and very strongly the other way about the other.
Sorry, city attorney Jensen, can we go back to, do you want to make a substitute motion? Is that what you want to make, councilmember Chow?
Yeah.
Can we just go back? Is that okay? Or just?
Yes, so if, if you'd like to recognize councilmember Chow, she would have the opportunity to make a substitute motion.
Sure, go ahead.
So I'd like to make a substitute motion that we, yeah, I, I have to say that I also like the bench donation dedication policy, I think it's needed. I just didn't like that we are adopting a brand-new policy on consent agenda, and when it's not on the adopted work program, that's really, should be discouraged. And, but since now, now it's here, so I'm proposing that... And, but since now it's here, so I'm proposing that, here's my motion, okay? That we should deny the request to place a citizen bought plaque. Not only the donation amount, the plaque is not bought by the city. That means the quality of the plaque is not guaranteed. To place on an existing park bench without making any donation nor comply with existing policy. And this is not her bench, it's still city bench. But placing the plaque, public would misunderstand that. And I would like to revise the resolution to involve the Parks and Rec Department and Commission to advise on the location of the, of the. So I am revising that the Department of Parks and Rec will accept donations. And the Director of Parks and Rec, in consultation with Parks and Rec Commission, shall establish a procedure to apply. And then they will, I trust that the Commission will identify proper locations. That way, we have a public process. It's important, this is a really good policy. We want the public to know and utilize this donation policy to donate benches in parks that may be near their home. But if this is a director-level thing, then there is no public process and public won't be able to utilize, only selected few will know about it. So that's my motion. The rest didn't change. And that on the application, there should be a description of the connection to Cupertino.
No, yeah. May we have a second, please?
I'd like to second that. I do have one clarification that I'd like to make of Chad. And I was wondering if an individual can perhaps stretch the dedicated to start of the commemorative statement to be dedicated to the residents of Cupertino by so-and-so? Or to park lovers or nature lovers or something like that? I'm going to assume that it could be stretched that way. The reason why I'm saying that is that I think that we could encourage, if you're looking for more benches, more benches to be dedicated or donated to the city. If the language is kind of opened up a little bit and people knew that they could, for $5,000 in an area they want to have a bench, they could perhaps see if that could happen. So, see if that would work. Is that possible?
So I don't think there'd be any problem with extending the recognition to somebody that's alive. I would be hesitant to have the ability to dedicate or recognize a particular cause because, you know, you have to treat the park lovers and the park haters equally.
Through the mayor.
So do we have a second? Do we have a second or you want to make a friendly amendment?
I'm just wondering if our city attorney could, so, dedicated to park lovers? Or haters?
So that's a viewpoint, right? People who hate, hating parks is also a viewpoint, right? And so that's why, I don't think it's a problem that, you know, to be able to recognize a living person with a connection to Cupertino or a family, which is the words that are used in the policy. I would advise against sort of, you know, allowing public access to, private access to public property for anything that looks like, you know, it's expressing support for a cause because you might wind up with results that you're unhappy with and potentially embarrassed by.
May we say dedicated to this park, whatever park that is?
So that is, that would probably be okay because it is just a recognition of the location, you know. But I guess I'd be hesitant to sort of jump to that conclusion off the top of my head.
Okay, I'm just wondering if you're able to wordsmith a way that people can make a donation and have a bench in the park?
We are approaching eleven o'clock, so I'd like to wrap this up, please. We are looking for Memorial Park, Memorial Bench. I want to reemphasize, if we want to do other benches, we can ask the staff to come back with other things. I really want to wrap this up before eleven o'clock, else we have to make a motion to extend the meeting. We have a, we have a, we have a substitute motion. Do we have a second?
Yes, I seconded.
Okay, so can we vote on that?
So just shortly about the plaque. I think the language right now is very, it just says the plaque may be inscribed. So it could, anyone can choose not to inscribe words in memory of and just say dedicated by whom, right? So the Director has the flexibility to allow that variation.
The intent of the policy is to limit the Director's discretion to vary the language so we don't run into First Amendment issues.
Yeah, but here it just says may be inscribed, so it may choose not to be inscribed.
That's correct. It could just be a, there could be a blank plaque. I'm not sure what the purpose of that would be.
So may I bring the motion back?
I mean, that means one person can still donate a bench under this policy.
A person could donate a bench with a blank plaque.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion. It was made by Councilmember Chow, seconded by Councilmember Moore. May we have a light vote, please?
Mayor, I'm not clear if that friendly amendment was made by Moore or whether it was accepted.
She didn't make a friendly amendment. Yeah, no.
Okay.
Sorry. There was no friendly amendment. So this is to vote on substitute motion that's motioned by Councilmember Chow and seconded by Councilmember Moore.
Mayor, one quick clarification, if I may. This item says, with respect to commemorative benches, this policy takes precedence over resolution seventeen dash one oh two donation policy and seventeen one oh three naming of city facilities. So if you're trying to donate a bench and it's not a memorial bench, it would still fall under the donation policy like it did when it came to council, this item did when it came to council about a year ago. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think we'd have to look at that. I mean, I would have, we would have to look at that carefully and I just would want to review any application under that policy to make sure that we don't get it run into any of these First Amendment concerns that we're talking about here.
Okay, so my question would be, can you have a bench that says gift of, gift from someone?
It's possible that there could be a gift of a bench under the donation policy. I think if there were a conflict between the two policies, this policy would control, given its, the language and the resolution and the more recent adoption.
Okay, I just don't want to thwart people who would like to donate a bench for $5,000 in some part of the city. And maybe they don't want it to be a memorial bench.
Thank you, so we have a motion.
Another question, though. So the current policy only allow individuals, so would an organization who maybe are helping veterans, would they be able to donate a bench and dedicate it to a veteran who is a Cupertino resident?
I don't think there's anything preventing an organization from donating the bench.
Donating, it's okay. So it's only the person being memorialized, the need to be an individual, okay?
Okay, thank you. So let's vote on Councilmember Chow's substitute motion that's seconded by Councilmember Moore.
The motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
So we're going back to the original motion made by Councilmember Flun, seconded by me.
Can we separate that? Because I would like to vote on the dedication policy, but not on the waiver.
That you have to ask the original mover if he's willing to.
I would also point out that that would likely require a motion to extend the time of the meeting past eleven o'clock.
Oh, yes, I would like to make a motion to extend for another 10 minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's being moved, seconded. Let's vote by light, please, to extend the time.
And just to clarify, that's limited to considering this item?
Yes, yes, thank you.
So who made the motion?
Councilmember Flun made the motion, original motion, and I seconded.
So could we separate?
This is to extend time.
Oh, I thought I voted, okay.
Vice Mayor, did you vote with your light, Mayor?
Okay, sorry, I didn't.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Councilmember Chow is asking, Councilmember Flun, are you willing to separate it into two motions?
No, frankly, I think that we owe Ms. Francesco an apology for how long it's taken us to get to this point.
So then I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve the dedication policy that, in the staff recommendation.
Without the.
Without the waiver.
Okay. Without allowing Ms. Francesco to have her plaque.
Motion to approve the dedication policy to so that we are voting on the two items separately.
Moore, second?
It's being moved and seconded.
Because I don't think that these two items should be considered together.
Let's move it, let's vote by light, please.
The motion carries with Wei and Moham voting no.
Okay, so that's, that passed? So do we have another motion?
I'll make a further motion that we waive the commemorative bench dedication policy to allow a one-time waiver for this policy for Marilyn Francesco.
I'll second that. I'll second it. It's being moved and seconded. May we vote by light, please?
Mayor and Vice Mayor, please vote with your lights. Motion carries with Chow and Moore voting no.
Okay, thank you. So I think we have five minutes. I don't think we have time to go to number five. To extend it again. Do we want to go to number five? I'm going to let any, my fellow councilmembers decide. How's that?
Okay, I motion that we extend another 10 minutes to consider number, item five.
Until 11:20? Because I think I extended to 11:10. Do we have a second? Okay, it's being moved and seconded. Let's vote by lights, please.
Motion carries with Moore abstaining.
All right, so we are going to consent calendar number five. Consider ratifying account payable for the period ending November 13th, 2022. This is the item continuing from February 7th. I don't think we have a staff report, right?
We don't have a staff report through the mayor. So this is the item that was continued from February 7. My understanding is that we're trying to ratify the account payable for the month of November from last year. Staff went ahead and realized that there were receipts that were coming to our attention. We wanted to bring to councils for not any action, but just to bring it to council's consideration.
And I think it's a lot of questions that's being answered by staff.
And there were a number of questions that were asked. So we're here to, and Administrative Service Director Christina Alfaro is here to answer any questions that you may have.
So we have 15 minutes. If council does have questions, can I open the public comment first?
I think one member of the public pulled the item. I was hoping to hear from the member.
Yeah, I'm going to open the public comment. Yeah, so let's open the public comment. Do we have a card?
Mayor, we have one hand raised on Zoom.
Okay.
Peggy Griffin?
Yeah.
Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. For the audience that's left, those present and those on Zoom, the accounts payable is the city's checkbook register. It lists all the checks the city has issued for each week roughly. This record goes way back in the city's history. Why do I care and keep bringing this up for transparency? It's how the city spends our tax dollars. It's because if the real day-to-day numbers aren't right, then it's hard to have confidence in the big picture called the budget. Also, when the council or the city manager approves a contract amount, the invoice payments to those contractors appear in accounts payable. The public can see if amounts are exceeded. I would like to understand several questions. What causes an accounts payable to be missed like this? What's being done to prevent this from happening in the future? In the process of reviewing accounts payables, there are at least four reports missing. April 13th, 2018, June 15th, 2018, July 3rd, 2020, and November 14th, 2022. What causes an accounts payable to be missed like this? What's being done to prevent this from happening in the future? Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And Mayor, I see no more cards or hands raised.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comment. I do believe these answers are being answered on the staff reports and I've read them.
Yes, you're absolutely right, Mayor. I was going to say they have been reiterated in the staff report.
That's correct. So we're going to council discussion? Go ahead.
Yes, I was wondering if those, if the responses could be briefly repeated here for the public who perhaps did not see the responses with regards to how this happens, that these get missed.
So I believe the responses are embedded in the staff report and which is published on the city's website.
Okay, would you be so kind as to remind us of what that is? What the answers were for that?
I mean, I can kind of go over high level and Christina, correct me if I'm wrong. It happened during the week of Thanksgiving. So the receipts came to us and we realized that when we sent it to audit for consideration, there was one week missing. So we quickly realized that we were one week behind and brought it to council.
Also, through the mayor, I actually also pulled this item and for this reason. In attachment B, accounts payable, page 14 of 21, there is a payment to Boucher Law, PC dated November 4th, 2022, for finance manager parentheses 2022, close parentheses. I would like to see the invoice for this and the contract for this service made public, redacting what is needed. For some background, the city contracted with Boucher in 2022 for recruitment services.
Mayor, point of order. I think we're going, I think this is outside of the scope of what's agendized.
Pardon? This, we made a payment for finance manager and we hired Boucher for recruitment and we paid them for recruitment. I'm trying to understand, why are we having this payment there for finance manager?
The correction, the question is whether this payment was made for services performed. Now you're going into policy issues that are unrelated to the agenda item.
So how would this information?
Yes, of course, she's welcome to email the questions.
So how would this information come to light for the public?
There's no public role in reviewing these documents. This is, this is, this is not even something that should be on an agenda.
So if I saw something that was an anomaly, I can't speak to it? Is that right?
Of course, you could put it on an agenda if there was an actual anomaly.
Through the mayor, we'll be more than happy to provide the contract and the receipt. I think this is not the place to discuss why Boucher Services is retaining a finance manager. And that's a different policy. That is not the content of the agenda item today. We'll be more than happy to provide you the receipt.
And the contract you mentioned?
Sure.
And will that go to all of council? So that we're all on the same page here?
Sure, if all the council would like to see it, we'll forward it to all council.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, I think we are good on time and I am going to adjourn this meeting. Can I hear you?
Mayor, you-
Can hear you, can hear you.
Mayor, you would, uh, you would, um, I think, I think, um, uh, there needs to be a vote?
Oh, that's right.
Oh, just a minute, I have one more question.
I need a motion and a vote.
Um, can I, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
So, one other question, I think Peggy mentioned was, um, I think it's, thank you the staff for quickly catching the missed, uh, receipt and that, but I think one question the public asked was, wha- how is, or do we do anything to prevent this from happening?
Um, through the mayor, so I think we are doing that, we're bringing it to council for you to ratify, um, the mistake.
So, um, I, I'd like to make one comment. Our staff found a mistake and brought it to us, and I think we should credit the staff for finding the mistake, and I do believe they learn from their mistakes and make sure that this doesn't happen again. Um, yeah, that, that, that would be my comment. If, if we say, "Staff, don't bring any mistakes to us," uh, we're gonna, you know, put that on you, I, I, I just think that our staff is honest, they made a mistake, they bring it to us for, to ratify it, and they will pay attention to that, okay? And, and we learn from our mistakes, so I, I would like to-
Definitely, um, that's why I recognize that, I thank the staff for finding and picking up this and bring this, uh, updated so quickly, but as we know that, we just adopted the council procedure and we learn from our mistake, but then people change, people get busy. So, when we find out, oh, I missed it this time, usually a normal process would be, okay, what can I do to, so that I don't miss it next time? And then there may be a, you can establish a procedure, like, uh, if I keep forgetting my key, I will keep, I will keep putting it in the same location and so that next time is less likely to happen. So, um, so I'm just one, wondering, are they, are we doing something to learn from the mistake to, so that we have a more solid procedure?
I think-
Which is, I think the civil grand jury asked, are we doing, changing anything to, to have a solid procedure when we found a mistake, right?
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that, that's just my line of question.
Thank you, so I do need a motion and a second before a couple minutes left.
So, it wasn't answered, this is, was not answered, so we are not doing anything?
That, that is being answered, it is-
Uh, no, it seems, um, so the answer is we are not changing anything.
No. Okay. City Manager Wu, could you repeat that answer again?
Sure. So, we are bringing it to council's attention every time there is a mistake to ratify.
But question was, any procedure changed to prevent it from happening?
So we are going back and realize that there was a mistake and we're bringing it to you for reconsideration.
Hmm, okay, thank you. So, um, I need a motion and a second, be, um, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 23 dash 023, ratifying accounts payable for the period ending November the 13th, 2022.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, um, may we vote by light?
I have a substitute motion, um, that we, uh, do not approve this accounts payable until the whole of council has received their information, um, that I requested.
Uh, that's a substitute motion, do we have a second?
Okay, second.
It's been moved and seconded, um, can we vote by light?
The motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
So we have the original motion, um, can we vote on it now? Okay, please vote by light. Before we adjourn, I'd like to ask City Manager a question, what Councilmember Moore wants, um, you will provide to us?
Yes, we will provide the receipt and also the contract for Christopher Boucher Services to all council.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor, um, we, I, um, could you please review, vote, I had to change, the Councilmember Moore accidentally voted incorrectly.
I'm sorry?
Councilmember Moore accidentally voted in the wrong manner and, uh, so I restarted the vote, so if you could, if you don't mind, restart.
All right.
The motion carries with Moore voting no.
All right, thank you. So I am going to adjourn the meeting, thank you very much.